Sorry, you didn't miss nothing.
You gotta get her own little dish. You gotta get her own little dish.
We're good?
I just saw the same. Thank you.
We're good?
Yeah. Everybody leave happy.
I call this meeting order will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to its republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Roll call.
Abbott.
Here.
Odom. Pierce.
Here.
Dietz. Gelfen.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Malika.
Here.
Whitaker. Sullivan.
Here.
Reesinger.
Here.
Actually, Mr. Whitaker did just get on.
Yeah, sure did.
Announcement, there's gonna be, we're gonna pave industrial drive. That's the one like behind Walmart, behind box up in there. It's gonna start on the 12th and end on the 19th. So plan your route accordingly, okay? That's a pretty big road, they'll probably have it shut down for a little while. Public comment on agenda items. Mr. Lombardo?
I just have some suggestions and stuff when you're talking about the budget and that. It looks like we're gonna be talking about the capital budget, so this would be pertinent to it. I'm getting totally confused when you say assessments, because you have a full assessment. So say something's assessed at $160,000, but then you get your millage off of half of assessment. So can you just kinda clarify? You gave an example, and somebody told me you said a $50,000 home in Treasure Lake, did you say? Or $500,000 at the last meeting? Do you remember?
I'm pretty sure it was 500.
500, yeah. I have very detailed examples of, and a model, so that we can change the millage. The board can tell me, you know, if you wanna increase or decrease a certain line item, what it would impact on a real person's property. And some of the addresses may be familiar, because they are modeled after all of you. So your actual property taxes could be on the screen if you wanted to show like the impact of it.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is when you use the word assessment, if you can at least give a definition, is it what the millage is based off of, which is half an assessment? So then a $500,000 assessment millage, it would be a million dollar assessed home.
I can definitely do a tutorial on assessment if the board wants me to.
Just, just so I understand a little. And then looking at the millage, and then you go, well, if we raise the millage, it's only gonna go up one. My understanding is right now the millage in the city of Dubois is higher than the millage in Sandy. Is that correct? So if you can say we're raising it one, what's it against? Does it mean we're dropping one off of Dubois? If you can at least explain it, then the people in the city know they're going down one, we're going up, and you keep doing it. I, I looked at my assessment, based on a half of an assessment, I have like an $85,000 assessment, the one half. And it's showing Sandy 7.375, the fires 1.5, and the library is .25. So if you could kind of explain that a little, I think it might help people focus on where things are going in their realm of the world. That's all I kinda wanted to say. And then in the library, you were proposing to go up to .5% assessment. So if that was for the whole city, we're basically doubling the budget for the library, but it didn't look like it in the numbers. That's, so I'm really confused on some of this stuff, so if you can, when you go through, especially on who's getting, how it's getting raised, how it relates to Sandy relating to Dubois and stuff, I would appreciate that. That's what I wanted to mention.
Thanks, Dave. Joel Keane? Budget.
First off, Joel Keane from 366 Hug Camp Road. As I'm asked, show me a little grace tonight, I'm not feeling very well, I had some treatments today. Had a conversation before the meeting with Scott Furrow, and I asked him if he could, on Wednesday morning, around 6 o'clock, shut the water treatment plant down. And then at maybe 6:15, go in and shut the storage treatment plant down. To kinda prove a point that I heard at the last couple of meetings. He said he would like to, but he didn't think he could. And I said, well, how about hypothetically, we do that? I don't wanna separate us, I know we're one city right now, but Sandy Township residents, you work, you have businesses in the city, your kids go to schools in the city, you eat at restaurants in the city. You say you could get no benefit from the city water and sorries, that's just simply not true. I guess you're saying you do not use water or sorries other than in your own home. You do not benefit from city water and sorridge. I don't think that's correct. I think you do benefit. And I think if new businesses come into town, you're gonna be working at them. I know you shop, you get coffee, everything you do, you do in the city. There's no schools in Treasure Lake, there's no hospitals in Treasure Lake. There's very few businesses in Treasure Lake. So you do benefit from Dubois City of Water and Sorridge. So what I would like to propose is that 50% would go into the water fund, and 50% would go into the sorrel fund. I know many of you sitting at this table had said previously that you didn't think it was right to take funds out of sorrel and water and put them in the general budget. But it looks like that's what you're proposing to do. I don't think that's right either. It might not be legally wrong, but I think it's ethically wrong. And I think I've heard that said, stated many times by the board member sitting here. So I wish you would consider that. And also, I understand that the new sorrel treatment plant was built so large and expensive, so it could attract new businesses into the area. Once again, that would benefit residents of Sandy Township and Treasure Lake. So I don't understand that part of it. I'm confused as to why we say things like that, that they're not benefiting at all from water and sorridge rates. And I did a little online search, I think these numbers are accurate. 3,000 gallons of sorrel per month, and Bradford pays 3225. The new proposed rates here in Dubois would be 6375. I believe Clearfield also pays for 3,000 gallons of sorrel, 3225 per month. Their water rates per thousand gallon, Bradford, as we know, because of the timbering, theirs is one of the lowest, in the state of $5 per thousand gallons. Clearfield, what I gathered, looking on the internet, is 664. Dubois, our proposed new increase would be $16, plus a $15 surcharge. So I don't know how that's gonna help people come into the area when your sorrel and water rates are so high. I think maybe you should look at the tiers, maybe charge the businesses a little bit more, since the plant's gonna basically benefit them more than the typical resident. And that was a reason for the large cost of the sorrel plant. I'll thank you for your time, and I hope you'll consider something. Thanks, thank you.
Thanks, Joel. That's all for the public comments on agenda. Let's move on to the consent agenda, which is going to include all these? Yeah. Dubois City Bills, Sandy Bills, Sandy Water Authority Bills, Municipal Authority Bills, the City Hall renovations, industrial drive payment, pay app, number five.
Motion to approve Cassette Agenda.
Second.
Proper movement second, any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Abbott.
Yeah.
Pierce.
Yes.
Gelfen.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Malika.
Yes.
Whitaker.
Yep.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Next, on to proclamations. We have a Veterans' Day proclamation. I was at a middle school reading that today. So we kinda need to approve it today. And tomorrow, I'll be at the vets.
I mean, I think it was my understanding that was part of the consent agenda.
Okay. Comment if you're prepared from veterans. Yes.
There's a Veterans Breakfast tomorrow at the Dubois American Legion, and there's also a Veterans Program at the VFW.
Yeah, I think it's at 11 o'clock.
I believe it's 11.
Yeah, that's when I'm supposed to be there. Yep.
There's probably something coming up afterward. Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to special presentations, it'd be the city pension review. Zach, you're up. Should be pretty good.
Yeah, should be a quick and easy one, hopefully too.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody, Zach Benioe, on behalf of C.S. McKee. Thank you for having me today. This is actually my fourth quarterly review already that I've done for the city. So one year since we partnered with, with the city of Dubois, and it's been a fantastic partnership. And thank you to all of you for, for everything and the hospitality. We, you know, it's like Mayor Pata just said, it was a, it's been a good year. So we'll celebrate our one-year anniversary, but you have a long way to go. We've been working with Allegheny County since the 70s, so hopefully, you know, we can continue to work with you over the next 50 years as well. But, you know, just to talk about the third quarter, it is a lot different than what we saw in the first six months of the year. It was a welcome reprieve from sort of the chaos started at the beginning of the year, from a market perspective. It was very volatile for the six months, first six months. These last three months, from July into October, if you take all things, you know, remove what happened the six months prior, I wouldn't say it was quiet, but relative to what we were used to, it was definitely welcomed. The two main drivers that we saw in the markets, and we're still paying close attention to, there are two main themes that we talked about during those three months. The first, it's this staggering and continued spending when it comes to artificial intelligence. Not only these large companies, but governments, everybody is trying to get out ahead, kind of position themselves against their competition. And the numbers that we're seeing companies spend, it's, it's really unbelievable and unprecedented. Some compared to the early 2000s with the internet and the late 90s, but it might be on a stage of its own. You look at the seven largest companies in the United States, they call them the magnificent seven, they're estimated to spend $330 billion on artificial intelligence this year, 2025 alone. And we, you know, it's gonna be transformative, it's probably gonna change the way we, we work, but at the end of the day, a lot of these companies that are putting that type of money, they're going to eventually say, how is this impacting our bottom line? How, where are the results? And there's still some questions on that, right? There are different studies, and I'm not an artificial intelligence expert, but, you know, there's research out of MIT where they estimate about 95% of the AI investments that have taken place so far aren't profitable, aren't getting any return on their investment. So there's a lot of money going into that space, and for good reason, but there's a lot, there's still a lot of unknowns and concerns with something that's this unprecedented. So we're watching closely with that, but that did help drive the markets during this quarter. The second thing, that's probably more relevant to, to most people, we kinda, we saw this tug of war that's been going on between the Trump administration and the Federal Reserve, even since before he started his second term. You know, President Trump has been adamant that he wants interest rates lowered. The Federal Reserve has said, you know, we're not sure about that yet, we want to see this play out in the data first. And if you look at what's been going on over, you know, the last, you know, few years, inflation has been sticky. Inflation is still around 3%. The Federal Reserve likes to see it at 2% to get to their target levels. So they have that. Consumers are still spending. You know, the, everything has been going relatively well from a corporate, you know, profitability standpoint. That again, that's not going to be a trigger for them to say, let's cut interest rates lower. But what happened in, in the third quarter was there was the fiasco with the Bureau of Labor Statistics, as I'm sure you remember, you know, seeing in the headlines. They actually had a revision of over 900,000 jobs that they overestimated that took place from the start of the year until July. So after that happened, the Federal Reserve, they, they have a dual mandate. They're supposed to control for inflation, and they're supposed to promote for full employment in the country. So when they saw that, they, they really were backed into a corner, and they started cutting interest rates. So there's been two interest rate cuts since the third quarter. We're estimating there's gonna be another one here in December. Again, that's going to be a tailwind for not only stock market, but also, you know, the fixed income market as well. And, you know, if you look up on the screen there, fixed income, you know, bonds, right? 2%, almost 2% just for that quarter alone, over 6% for the, for the, you know, almost one year. That's not the experience that a lot of.
That's because the interest rates come down.
Well, and they've been, in '22, they, they raised them quickly, right? That was an unprecedented rate hike. So that helps bonds, there was short-term, near-term pain during that, because the prices fell as rates went up. But for pension plans where, you know, the main goal is for us to either meet or exceed the actuarial rate of assumption each year, to try to work the pension, you know, infinitely through perpetuity, when fixed income is earning 4%, 5%, 6%, it makes things so much easier on the equity side. You know, you don't have to rely on a 10%, 15%, 20% return to get you to your actuarial rate of, actuarial rate that, you know, that we're aiming for. So both of those were, you know, very nice tailwinds for the markets, they helped the pensions. We look at the pension, you know, returns overall, 5.72% for the third quarter alone. Again, we'll take that every single quarter. The year-to-date, up over 13%. Can't ask for much more. And then just to give you an update, as of the close of business on Friday, the year-to-date was actually up another, call it 0.5%. So 13.59 for the non-uniform, 13.71 for the police. So very exciting to sit here, I will say, you know, because of the AI spending, because all these tech companies continue to, to return well, there are some questions about, you know, valuations, right? Just because it's, it's a good company, it's profitable. If it's too expensive, does it make sense? You know, we'll see. The last few weeks, we saw a lot of these tech companies really have a pullback. They haven't done as, you know, they gave up some of their returns from earlier on. It hasn't been anything that, that has, you know, jumped out or caused much, you know, any fear, but it's something that we're watching closely. But that's why we build a well-diversified portfolio. We incorporate, you know, value stocks as well, as well as, you know, 40% fixed income to be that ballast of, of your portfolio and your plan. So all good news as of now? Any questions for me? All right.
I briefly wanted to remind the board that there's a difference between, when we talk pension, there's a difference between the investment management firm, which is C.S. McKee, represented by Zach, and then we're also joined tonight by the actuarial side in AccraSure. So if you have questions for Zach, that'd be related to the actual investment of the funds, anything else, we can probably direct towards AccraSure. Guess you did good.
It's easy when the market's doing good, isn't it? Yes.
We'll invite Amy Kraus and Carrie Troutman up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So my name's Amy Kraus, I'm an actuary and consultant with AccraSure. Carrie Troutman is also a consultant with AccraSure. And if the name is new to you, Mockenhop has been doing the pension plans for, for many years now for the Dubois Police. Over the last 10 years, Mockenhop has served as your actuary.
They're asking you to turn, put the mic up a little bit.
Can you hear me better now? No?
We can't control that, unfortunately.
Can you all hear me okay up front?
I can.
Okay, maybe if I turn a little bit, I'll try to speak a little louder. What I was saying is AccraSure is now the actuarial consultant for both the city of Dubois Defined Benefit Plans and also the Sandy Township Plan. And prior to AccraSure, the, both plans were going through Mockenhop. Mockenhop became part of AccraSure. And so you still have the same team that's been working on these plans for many years, Carrie being one of them. So for the, the city's police plan over 10 years, and then for Sandy Township Defined Benefit Plan over the last 20-plus years. Last year, we took over the Dubois Non-Uniform Defined Benefit Pension Plan as well. And so now, we, we have all the Defined Benefit Plans of the city and of the township. And it puts us in a position to really be able to work seamlessly with your plan's legal counsel and with your interim management team to be able to help with this consolidation process and look at the plans individually and how they come together. And that's kind of all part of the negotiation process that's going on right now. So if there's any questions on that, I'm not sure that we can answer them here, since that process is still ongoing. But essentially, what our role is, excuse me, our role is, is to try to cost out the different things, looking forward, looking at where the plans sit today, and then with those changes, how that might impact the individuals that are participating in the plan, as well as the city overall, and the cost to them. So where we're at currently, we've transitioned and matched kind of the prior actuaries information for the non-uniform plan, which means we can move forward with finalizing the 2025 valuation. The police plan, we're also working on the 2025 valuation. So essentially, every two years, we complete a new valuation. We look at assets and we compare them to your obligation or liability to determine where the plans are currently funded. And depending on where you're funded, that determines your budget over the next couple of years. So that's kind of our role with it on an ongoing basis. The, the reports have to be completed before the end of March of next year, and that's when we help the city prepare and do the filings for the Commonwealth that gets submitted to the state, and that those reports are all kind of, sorry, all kind of combined. When the auditor general looks at your plans, they look at state aid that it will allocate to the city, to the township, for your plans, those types of things, they use that reporting for those purposes. So that's where we're at right now. Once we have those reports completed, we'll be coming back to the city to go over those results. And again, because the consolidation is kind of in process right now, everything's in negotiations, the 2025 valuations are gonna be the separate plans, how they were before the consolidation. And then when we look at this again in two years, 2027, we'll be looking at the consolidated plan. So are there any questions?
Our report's coming a little later than normal, isn't it?
So I think that there's a delay. We wanted to deliver both reports together. And so for the non-uniform, we had to go through the process of matching the prior actuaries. So essentially, we completed one valuation as of 2023 to make sure we have our understanding of how the plan operates, make sure that we have the same data and everything that was used before in your results. And so once we had that completed, then we were able to move forward with the valuation. So they're currently, I know the police plan is currently in review and should be done here soon, and then the non-uniform will follow that as well. So the timing should be earlier going forward.
And your thoughts on dropping the dissipation rate for the non-uniform at maybe a tenth of a percent a year, what do you think of that?
So the discount rate, one of the biggest drivers of cost when we're looking at a pension plan, not cost, but obligation. So when we try to determine what that liability number is, we have to assume a certain discount rate, which should be tied to your expected long-term rate of return on your assets. So Zach just presented where the assets stand today. We use that information, how your assets are allocated and invested. And we have to use whatever that long-term rate of return assumption is to say, are you in a good spot now based on you earning that interest rate every year going forward? And so with this valuation, we recommended, and the city approved, lowering the discount rate to 7.5%. Overall, comparing to peers, that's still on the higher end, from what we see, and we work on over 200 Defined Benefit Plans across the Commonwealth. So I think that it's still a continuing conversation that we'll continue to look at into the future. I think it, it's always, what I like to tell my clients is, when you lower that discount rate, think of it as trying to remove some of the risk out of the plan. So if you are dependent on getting 7.5% return year after year, then C.S. McKee, Zach and his team, they're gonna have to maintain higher equity, higher risk within your portfolio in order to achieve that, which means there's a lot more volatility that comes from those investments from year to year. And so it's always, it's always a conversation that when we lower the discount rate, that's gonna come into your future funding requirements. Essentially, as we lower that rate, we now have to put more money into the plans, because instead of getting 7.5%, say you get 7%, that means the city has to put in more money to make up that shortfall that the investments are no longer going to achieve.
Is that still better for overall health of the plan, to try to lower that?
Yes, I think that because you're taking risk out of the portfolio, you aren't as dependent on those returns in the future. It just puts more strain on your current budget.
Yeah, and this year's a good year, but we have a bad, bad year, that really hurts.
Right, and this is the third year in a row of a good year.
Yeah, so you gotta expect something somewhere.
Market cyclical.
Yeah. So do you think it's prudent to drop it a tenth of a percent a year?
So we do the valuations every other year, so every two years, we'd be looking at a change. I think that it's something we can look at again when we begin work on the 2027 valuation, because this year, we've already lowered it 50 basis points, going from eight to seven and a half. So that's gonna be a significant.
True, yeah.
Increase on the budget. And so I think then, when we begin our work on the 2027 valuation, we'll look at where assets allocated, what do different firms like C.S. McKee and others in that space, what do they say is the future outlook? Because we can't just rely on historical returns, we have to look at capital markets that are forward-looking, future-looking. And I think at that point, we can kind of come up with a, you know, should we go 25 basis points, and then another 25 basis points? Or are we in a reasonable range? Or are we in a reasonable range, just based on where those capital markets and forward-looking rates look at that time?
What would you say your average assumption rate is of your 200 plans?
Seven percent.
Okay.
I would say.
And we're at seven and a half? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else have a question? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Nice seeing you again. Zach, have you had a meeting with the pension board lately?
Yeah, sure. So we met with the non-uniform board last quarter. I have not, we've not had a meeting with them since.
I'm supposed to be at that.
Well, you were there, I think, it was last quarter. So I didn't do it this, we met at the Sandy Township Building. Yeah. And we talked through everything. I gave them a very similar update as to this. I'm happy to do that.
How often should we, should they have that? Twice a year?
I think the ordinances say annually, but
Yeah.
You could have it biannually.
Yeah, just make sure we have, they have it once a year at least.
Yeah, I'm happy to, like, I'm here. We can, we can, I'd be happy to meet the police, I'd be happy to meet the non-uniform. We can bring books for them to, so they have an update that's based on whatever meets the needs of the cities.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Next is housing study. Adam?
You're up.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to present to council members and for everybody for coming. My name's Adam Partwig. I am Senior Director of Operations for the Alliance for Nonprofit Resources. After graduating from Penn State in 2011, I spent the bulk of my career as a municipal manager before going over to HRG with my friends here, and then transitioning into my current role. Thank you, Ben. Some of the things that we're going to discuss tonight, and I believe you all got your report from then, some, just an overview of the condition for the city and the township as it relates to housing, current economic conditions, an analysis for an approach going forward. And then we're going to talk about some redevelopment revitalization strategies that I think would be beneficial to both the city and the township moving forward, and then some opportunity for funding considerations for both the city and the township. What did we look at as we started this analysis? We wanted to take a look at the population trends in the city and the township. We did utilize the BRIGHT assessment that was performed by Keystone Core. It was a very good assessment, and we wanted to give consideration to that as well. We took a look at the strengths and weaknesses in both the city and the township, and leveraged those to create other opportunities that would be beneficial. And then we used the data and the information that we got as part of our analysis to create a real-world, actionable, and attainable plan for the consolidated city. Some areas of opportunities is a nice way that I like to put it is, what is currently can be viewed as a negative for the city and the township, right? Little bit of a declining aging population. We have outmigration. As you've seen the study, we have a lot of people that work in Dubois and Sandy Township that live in neighboring communities or counties. We have a shift in the workforce, certainly with the situation at the university here, and then other employers shifting, downsizing due to economic factors. There's been a steady increase in the rental market, as well as the vacancy rate, as you'll see in some of the data in your report. We can definitely see the trends over the years through the census, but specifically at 2020, we saw a large spike in the rental market, as well as the vacancy market. That can be attributed a little bit to the COVID pandemic, in that as the remote work opportunity presented itself, we saw a large influx of people moving out of cities and urban areas into what we would consider more rural or vacation-type homes, with the ability to work from them full-time. As the return-to-office mandates started to roll out, people either sold their homes or because of unfavorable real estate markets couldn't sell them, hung on to them, and decided to rent them out or use them as vacation homes, and supplement that with rental income. So we took a look at that and how to better control the rental properties, the landlord situation, and then how to gain better control of our vacant properties. Those are some areas of opportunity. Dubois and Sandy Township is a very beautiful community. One of the things that I do when I do a study in any community is I walk it. Because if I don't feel safe walking it and talking to the people, then Sergeant and I are going to have to have a conversation, because we have bigger problems than maybe a housing study or a stormwater study, right? That's not the case in Sandy and the city. Everybody that I encountered was extremely nice and pleasant and friendly and welcoming, very forthcoming with information, and I think that that's something to highlight. The city and the township, both current and future consolidated state, invest heavily in public safety, is the responsibility of council members, fire, police, and EMS protection. And you invest heavily in it, and it shows, because you have a very low crime rate. You have a fantastic park system for people to recreate with the Riverfront Trail, a beautiful water park downtown. And you have a sidewalk system that ties all of that in together. And so you have, you have the foundation for success in what attracts people to communities. Multiple large employers, which is fantastic, because we're not trying to bring industry into the area. We have industry here. I think one of the things that is going to be most important is working with the industry and the large-sector employers that are here, and really figuring out why their employer, employees that don't live in the community, live outside of the community. And we'll see some of that in the report, and we'll touch on it a little bit. But I think working with them to try to see what they would like to see in a community is going to be very important as well. So population, we can see, and everybody knows, we've had a steady decline in population. We can see the uptick around COVID. We're pretty in line with what the Commonwealth trends are, though, which is good. The average age is middle age, which is important, because it means we're not aging. We have a younger demographic, which is typically your high earners, which is good for the earned income tax base. And the average household side of 2.2 and 2.5, to me, means that we have younger families that are starting to have families, have children, which is going to help, help for growth. But that also determines, and we'll see, you know, the city of Dubois specifically, when we pulled the census data for all of the housing units, we have a lot of buildings with four, five, six-bedroom houses, which speaks to the older housing stock, which, while it means it takes more to renovate, because you have the lead and the weatherization issues to be aware of, we have opportunities for people to enter the housing market at a very low price and put equity into their houses, make them their own. And I think that that's very attractive for a lot of people. Okay. Median household income. Again, Sandy Township and the city are lower than what the state average is, but that, to me, is on par with where we are in central Pennsylvania. The important thing that I want to point out to everybody here is, as we get into strategy and R&amp;R a little bit later on, we want to be aware of what the median income is for everybody, both household and individuals, because that's going to drive the housing costs that we need to try to meet through our revitalization efforts. Studies show, and the finance folks will back me up, I think, I hope, anybody that spends 30% or more a month on housing costs is considered to be housing distressed, housing burdened. And so we want to be very aware of that, as we look to figure out what our cost of housing needs to be at. And it's around $170,000, $175,000 for a house. As you look at Sandy Township, we have an older average age, we have a higher income, so the median home value for Sandy Township should naturally be higher than the city of Dubois, which it is, and that's okay. That speaks to the, kind of the makeup of the community, right? We want to be able to have, and as you look at it financially, when you build a community and a municipality, we want to capture the entire life cycle of everybody's earnings, right? So when I graduate college and I buy my starter home, we're getting real estate transfer tax on that, and we're getting one-half or 1% for the local municipal earned income tax. And then I'm going to get married, and I'm going to sell my house, buy a bigger one. So now we've got multiple real estate transfer transactions and more income, right? And so as you look at redevelopment and revitalization of communities, you want to make sure that we have housing stock available for our starter homes, our homes as we grow into families, and then as we become empty nesters again and cycle back and downsize, because we don't have kids and so much stuff, we want to be able to make sure that we have housing stock, affordable housing stock, available for all of those different stages. Because when you, when you look at the amount of revenue that we're able to generate through all of the moves and the earned income taxes, that is at the bulk of, when you lay out a community and look at what you want to be when you grow up, that's your biggest earner, right? We want to bring people in, but we want to keep them, because they're going to come here for tourism, and then they're going to fall in love with the shops in Brady Street and downtown area, in the parks, and they're going to stay here. And that's what we want as a captive audience.
Might work now?
Maybe. Going to have to make you work tonight then. Here, we just wanted to highlight the individuals employed by employment sector. Obviously, the healthcare sector is the largest, followed by manufacturing. And I think one of the things that excited me the most when I first came to the city is you drive down 219 and pass Dubois is, the retail sector is very strong here, right? So you come to the city of Butler, and what's our, we have a Dollar General downtown, right? Well, that doesn't attract anybody to the city of Butler, but don't, they're not watching, so. That's important, right? People come here to shop, to spend their dollars. We want to try to capitalize on that and keep them here, right? So we're not fighting the, we don't have retail food stores. We have all that, right? And so what we want to focus on with this graph is working with our healthcare sector, our Health and Human Services, government, organizations, those large employers, and we really want to figure out why their people live elsewhere, right? Because it's not just housing costs. There's other, there's got to be other factors in it, right? It's proximity to stores, or schools, or daycares. And as we look to revitalize, redevelop, and attract new businesses to the area, we want to be cognizant of what those people need, right? Healthcare, childcare is a huge, huge area of concern for young families. You know, everybody's a two-income household now, and that childcare piece is a very important piece. And so as we work to attract businesses to the area and figure out where we're light in industry, that's what we want to do, is partner with our employment sector, our large employers, to figure out what they want to see in the consolidated city. I touched on this earlier, so I won't spend too much time on the top. You can see the median home values. We expect that we're going to be lower than the Commonwealth, just because the Commonwealth is going to take in Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, and the third-largest city on home football Saturday State College. Sandy Township with Treasure Lake is going to have that higher median household home value. One of the things that stands out to me and is of interest to me is owner-occupied homes, and then the vacancy rate. I touched a little bit on it earlier about rental properties and the vacancy rates, and vacancy rates do trend upwards over the years. We could see a big spike in 2021 after return-to-office mandates started. And we're going to discuss in our strategy how we can better handle that and turn that into a positive. Oftentimes, my job as a township manager was not putting together an infrastructure improvement plan or a budget, or working with my police chief. Oftentimes, my job as a township manager was to be the biggest cheerleader I could be for my community. Because if I was not being that cheerleader, nobody else was going to do it. And I think it's extremely important for the city, current and then consolidated, to shout it from the rooftops about our assets, right? We have a beautiful park system that many communities would be jealous of. We have a fantastic baseball stadium that's used by multiple teams. We have a Riverwalk Trail system that's probably better than the city of Pittsburgh's, except this Saturday, because game day is going to be there. We have a low crime rate, and we have good anchor businesses downtown. We know that we have opportunities to redevelop certain areas within the city, and I'm not neglecting the township, because as we redevelop that city, that's going to bring people to the area. And not everybody wants to live in a city or an urbanized setting. And so they're going to find their home in suburban, consolidated city of Dubois over by Juniada Lake, or out Long Avenue, up by the assisted living aging home on top of the hill. But what we want to do is put our best foot forward in where people come into the city, and that's on 219 with the waterfall at the railroad. And we've already started to do it with our red light replacement program, our sidewalk program there on Brady and Park. So we're putting our best foot forward. We want to continue to do that, and we'll talk about some opportunities to do that in our R&amp;R strategy. We talked about rental properties and vacancies. One of the big things that I would strongly recommend we do is enact a rental property ordinance and a vacancy property registration ordinance. And these go hand in hand, and I'm talking about them in low-hanging fruit to most complicated. We don't know what we have until we know what we have. So by enacting a rental property registration ordinance, everybody's going to have to register with the city, hey, I have a rental property, here's my tenant's information. Now we can inspect these properties annually to make sure that they meet just normal, basic living code conditions that you would have in a Section 8 HUD inspection. Nothing over the top, but basic, basic safety measures like GFCI outlets by your faucets, working gas, hot water, things like that. With that, when we have absentee landlords, what we want to do is, we want to make sure that those landlords appoint a property manager that's local. I don't want to call Indiana or Maryland to try to get a hold of a property owner, because their grass is six feet tall. I want to call the local landscaping company right down the road that was the appointed property manager for this property on Park Avenue, and he's going to come mow the grass, because he has the authority to do that. And the vacant property registration ordinance is the same thing. We just want to attract vacant properties. And with these ordinances, there's going to be a fee to register, and that fee for registration of those properties is going to cover the administration cost to inspect these properties, and then send out all the notifications and letters that need to be sent out. And we're going to do the property maintenance And we're going to do the property maintenance code with that as well, to make sure that everybody maintains their properties in a manner that's acceptable to council and their neighbors. Blight and revitalization, probably the biggest opportunity for success with low-hanging fruit. And one of the things that excites me most is, is the model neighborhood project. Like I said earlier, we have a great starting point with the intersection of Brady and Park with the sidewalks, the red lights. And then as we go out park towards the baseball, um, stadium, we have the opportunity to designate an area, um, as a model neighborhood and pick that as our starting point in our epicenter and kind of our poster. And with that, why we need to pick an area is, um, there's a section in the tax code that allows two taxing districts in a municipality to, uh, pass legislation that would allow the dollar value of improvements made to a house, either a new construction or renovation, to be deducted off of their property tax bill. It always takes two to tango, but it's a very important tool when you're looking at trying to convince people to put money back into their house. We can look at other strategies as far as nonprofit organizations or redevelopment authorities that would allow for low-interest or no-interest loans to provide financial help, um, to these individuals that want to do it, um, separate from federal and state grant programs that focus on LMI. Not that we want, don't want to focus on them, but we want to provide other opportunities for individuals to invest in their homes. The other thing to take a look at is, um, reconsidering how the city views parking, right? One of the things related to housing is we need people to come to the area. Once they come to the area, they're going to fall in love with us and they're going to stay because we're the best. We're the hidden gem in the Pennsylvania wilds, because we're more than just being in the wilds. Take a look at, and, and we can do a parking study to, to really see, do we have an excess of, of parking spaces? I, I think we might, but cities don't have parking problems, cities have walking problems. And so if we do away with paid parking, that's going to entice people to come, to linger and to spend more of their time and money in our downtown area, which is extremely important. Parking revenues are less than one percent for the city, so budgetarily, it doesn't look to me like it would be a huge detriment, uh, to the city's revenues. So I would, I would encourage the city to explore doing away with paid parking or at least consider two-hour parking during the day. All right, everybody needs a little rest and relaxation. Unfortunately, this is not where anybody's going to get it, because revitalization and redevelopment is not restful, but it is relaxing and it is needed. Create, thank you for laughing, I worked very hard on that one and I didn't want to mess it up. As I said earlier, that redevelopment nonprofit or similar organization, uh, I have case studies in, in your report for you to look at of communities that have done this. Habitat for Humanity does a similar models and has been very successful in Youngstown, I think, but I'm probably wrong. What that nonprofit organization is going to allow us to do is create and develop a revolving fund that's going to provide no or low-interest loans to individuals that want to come to the city, buy a house, re, uh, redevelop the house, or maybe they want to come and work with the future city land bank, because it's advantageous for the city to have their own so they can control it. Maybe they want to buy, uh, a lot out of the land bank and then take a page out of the city of South Bend book, where the city of South Bend has dozens of pre-approved, pre-permitted blueprints sitting on their shelf. Anybody can come in for two hundred bucks, buy it, it meets the aesthetic desire of the city. And then you can now go build your house, it's permitted, approved, meets all the zoning regulations, and you can go build a house. We have now cut out all of the red tape for development and there's no need for somebody to spend seven thousand dollars on an architect, right? And so revitalization and redevelopment doesn't need to be done by your big home builders, Ryans and D.R. Hortons and the like. When you look at your small individuals, you know, the small individual builders in the city of South Bend have collectively dumped something like ten billion dollars back into redeveloping properties in the city of South Bend, and they are the largest developer in the city. And that was how the city came from debt-distressed and overrun by drugs to where they are today. Streetscape and facade improvements, I, I tend to harp on building owners are your largest business in a community because they have a large investment in your community. So we want to support them and help them succeed as well, because if we give business owners, uh, a nice building and a nice stage, then they're going to want to come and be a part of our community and they're going to want to put up some risk with their business in our city. Public art, landscaping, um, you are a product of what you were when. Social scientist in marketing, Morris Massey, said that. And if you were born in the sixties, you are a child of the sixties. And knowing what the city of Du Bois was founded on and built on is going to be key to redeveloping and revitalizing, because we don't want to ignore it. Similarly, the city of Butler was founded in eighteen oh three by immigrants that worked at A.K. Steel and took pride in what they did and built craftsman-style houses that were well-built and still standing today. Knowing that helps us determine what we want our, our redevelopment efforts to look like, how we want our houses to look, how we want Main Street to look. And so it's very important not to lose sight of why everybody came to Du Bois in the first place, why everybody fell in love with Du Bois and Sandy Township in the first place, and then calling that out and emphasizing that. As the city and township consolidate, one of the things that's going to have to get looked at and readjusted is zoning. So everything gets combined initially and then we revisit it. And when we revisit it, um, we have the opportunity to take it, take a look at different zoning techniques that have come out, like inclusionary zoning, where if a developer wants to come in and develop a large parcel in Sandy Township, we can then require them as part of our, um, ordinance to have a portion of their development be affordable housing. And affordable housing can be defined off of the, the census median salary. What we could also do is say, okay, fine, if you don't want to do that and you want all your homes to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you have to then go and find X number of parcels or houses elsewhere in the city and the township and put forth the funds to redevelop those, right? So we can, we can encourage development by making it easy for them to work through our subdivision land development ordinance, um, figure out zoning, and we can welcome development. But we can also say, hey, listen, we recognize that it's hard to get a start in housing in this area, we want you to help do that with us. Sometimes it's not pushing dirt and developing new parcels that's the key, right? Taking a look at what we have, structure-wise, the mall, um, Brady Street, and, and allowing through overlay districts or, or just rezoning in general, multiple uses, right? We want to encourage retail and commercial on the first floor of, of Brady Street properties. But then we also want to encourage, um, residential on the second, third and fourth levels above that. And then as, um, vacant structures that were malls or large buildings before, um, become vacant, like the Pittsburgh Mills Mall out by where I'm from. Let's look at them differently and go, well, okay, we have a mall, we have the, the two stories and a mezzanine up, up top, can we take the mezzanine level, make those residential apartments that face inward to create a sense of community? And then your first floor has your retail commercials, shops, gym, golf simulator, whatever the developer wants to put in there, because we want to still be aware of our largest employers and what their employees want. And if our average age is thirty-seven, they're going to want things to do and experiences. And as people retire, they tend to be wanting to do more, they're involved more in the community, they're more active than what they might have, used to have been. So we want to be aware of that as well and look to redevelop existing structures. How are we going to pay for this all? I don't know. I do, I have many ideas, here's some of them. And I think it's a combination of grant funding, um, a little bit of private equity, uh, and a little bit of skin in the game from the consolidated city. Fair funds, we can look to secure a hundred and fifty, my goal was to get to five hundred thousand here, so that's where the numbers came from. Hundred and fifty thousand supports the redevelopment rehabilitation for affordable, affordable housing. Act one thirty-seven is your real estate transfer tax, um, we can work with, um, hundred thousand dollars from real estate transfer tax, uh, put towards housing stability and home improvements. The home program, you guys have been very successful, you got half a million dollars in the home program already. I think that doubling down on that and going back for the home program is going to be very important, except I think education, if you came to me and said, I want to give you a hundred thousand dollars to redo your house, you have to live there for five years, so for five years, we're going to have a lien on your property, but we're going to help you fund your, your, um, renovation projects. As long as I don't plan on moving within five years, I'm going to take it. And so I think that as, as the city consolidates and, and we have a better understanding of our staffing levels and with our rental registration, uh, and vacant property registration fees, we're able to bring people in, I think that PR and education is going to go a long way to getting buy-in. Local contribution, uh, as with any business or organization, you got to bring some stake in the game, because if, if, if we believe in this and we're, we're confident that it's going to be successful, we want to put our money where our mouth is. And we can do that in a way through budgeting and planning out that it's not going to negatively impact the budget or the tax base. Revolving loan fund, one of the things that is extremely important is, once we get our investment, we don't want to have to come up with that investment again. And so when we structure the program, there's always going to be a little bit of profit, whether it's a percentage of the sale or the rent amount, that's going to have to come back to the program on top of the costs, because we want to keep churning out, um, money to program participants. Working with community banks and businesses, we did this in Butler on a two-million-dollar, um, building, eighteen thousand square feet on Main Street that we just finished for our offices. We worked with a bank, um, through their tax credit program, and they contributed fifty thousand dollars towards us, uh, in that project. And I think that that's something that we can capitalize, capitalize on here as well. If anybody has any other questions, I apologize, I talk a lot, nobody listens to me, the statue outside listened but didn't give me any feedback. That's my email and my cellphone number, um, does anybody have any questions?
Ben, have you worked with him before?
I've worked with Adam before, I haven't worked with a nonprofit lands.
Okay.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity.
How do we get started?
Page one. One of the things that, and step by step, right? So in the report, they're laid out easiest to hardest. And I think the easiest thing for us to do is, once we consolidate, we know we have to start our rezoning process or at least taking a look at it. And so rental property ordinances, vacant property ordinances and parking are all extremely easy, low-hanging fruit that aren't going to cost a lot of money to create or adopt. And as we go through the budget, we can make some assumptions based on the census data that we have as far as number of housing units and what that generates based off of the fee. But I think taking a look at the rental property registration, the vacant property registration, and then the parking. Once we get into the model neighborhood and the EPA federal has an EDA grant for public works that would pay for infrastructure in the model neighborhood, we get a little bit more complicated. But taking a look at those three ordinances, two ordinances and, and the policy for parking would be my recommendations to start.
Okay. And we are consolidating, we'll have a new council starting in January.
Okay.
Would you be willing to come back and talk to them?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Actually, why don't you put your name in, we're looking for a manager now. He'd be a hell of a guy. Move us forward.
I'm a good cheerleader.
Yeah, well, get your pom-poms up, let's go.
Hey, hey, we'll buy him pom-poms. Thank you, thanks, Adam.
Thank you very much.
It's nice working with you.
Thanks. If you don't mind, I'll transition us real quick. We, we intentionally had the presentations the way they are. And Adam, I love that, that thought that you had about taking the, um, kind of the historic houses that you have and kind of building off of that as a community flavor. It reminded me of a Russell Kirk quote that's, um, "Men cannot improve a society by setting fire to it. They must seek out its old virtues and bring them back into the light." This idea that you reform things by taking what you have and reforming them, not just like, you know, knocking down properties and rebuilding. Meant that in a broader sense than just like raising buildings and such. But that was a good transition, because, um, we can't start over, right? But this, this consolidation is really historic in the sense that you are having an opportunity to reform a lot of things. Um, and I don't mean that in a colloquial sense, I mean, you literally get to reform your government and that kind of thing. So some of you, while we've been talking about budgeting, have been asking, um, what do we do to lower taxes or something like that? And it reminded me that, you know, taxes and fees are two evils, at least that's kind of the perspective of a lot of the board. But I would suggest that there is a lesser of the two evils, and that is fees, because fees are for service, whereas taxes are kind of like indiscriminate, right? So some of the things that you brought up, Adam, and some of the things that they're about to talk about with A, from HRG on stormwater, really tie back to fees. So instead of raising taxes, so to speak, one of the alternatives that we're trying to provide to you, uh, is for a new city, I mean, it'd probably be a year or more out for a lot of these things, but implement that, that rental registry and vacant property and stormwater, because in those instances, you're actually charging fees for service rather than just, again, kind of indiscriminately, uh, taxing everyone. And one of the great things is that it, it takes the burden off of the, uh, individual property owner who lives in their home and instead kind of rewards those people for owning their home, for improving their properties, uh, for living in this community, and kind of shifts the burden, uh, for services, kind of, you know, um, equally across the board. And so, um, if you were going to ask Lisa and I, what would you do in the new city to kind of equalize things more? We're really looking at things like that registry that you mentioned, stormwater fees, setting up business improvement districts and neighborhood improvement districts, um, so that you can charge fees on the properties that are actually benefiting from the services that you're providing. Um, and then the other component, I think, to this would be the emergency services authority that I've kind of pitched before, because again, uh, you can then pick up the entities that are currently benefiting from, uh, from the services that you're providing, but shifting that burden to them and off of the individual homeowner and property tax payer. Um, so with that, uh, why don't we transition to the next topic? Um, again, there's, the kind of theme of things that we would like to leave you with is shift that tax burden off of the individual taxpayer onto people that are actually benefiting from the service. And one of those key things that you've asked us to investigate more, um, is stormwater. And so with that, I will turn it over to Jeff Garrigan from HRG to introduce, uh, his colleagues and how, uh, the new city could look at having a stormwater authority.
Thanks, Ben. Jeff Garrigan with HRG, that was hard to beat, what an introduction there, nice transition and everything. As Ben mentioned, Ben invited us to talk about stormwater, stormwater fees tonight. As Ben mentioned, Ben invited us to talk about stormwater, stormwater fees tonight. I've invited two of my colleagues here to talk for me. They have much more experience and knowledge in this area than I do. Adrian and Tyler are here to give a presentation, have a discussion on stormwater and stormwater fees. So I will turn it over to them.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to attend the next workshop meeting. As Jeff mentioned, my name is Adrian Vicary. I'm an engineer with H R G, and I serve as the Vice President of Growth for our company. And as part of that, I have the opportunity to work with communities across Pennsylvania, assisting them with financial sustainability. And I've seen how they manage their stormwater infrastructure and how they fund their stormwater infrastructure can be a real game changer. And that, and as Jeff mentioned, I'm joined by Tyler. Tyler's part of our Capital Solutions team. And Tyler is leading our stormwater utility implementation across the Commonwealth. Tyler, before coming to H R G, he actually worked in local government. And when Tyler worked for one of our townships, he actually was on the other side. So we were working with him to implement the stormwater fee, and he was the leading person at the township that we were working with. So he's actually been through this both the public side and then been through it many times as an engineering consultant as well. So we look forward to discussing stormwater utilities and the possibility of a new revenue stream with you. And, you know, really, we've seen that since Pennsylvania passed legislation in 2012 allowing municipal authorities to manage stormwater programs and to charge a fee for stormwater, we've seen communities across the Commonwealth embrace stormwater utilities. And Ben, if you want to go to the next slide. The reason why that is, is there's been multiple pressures that have been building in recent decades for municipalities in managing stormwater. The first pressure is that stormwater infrastructure across the Commonwealth is aging. And it's aging faster than it's being replaced. And so what that's doing is it's causing a lot of deferred maintenance to be occurring in stormwater infrastructure. And as a result of that, we're seeing more and more catastrophic failures of stormwater infrastructure. We're seeing sinkholes develop throughout communities. We're seeing erosion under roadways, the nature roadway collapse. We're seeing flooding, private property damage, even loss of life in some of the communities across Pennsylvania. And part of that is due to increased development. So as we see more building structures being created, more roads and parking, it's creating more impervious surface. So impervious surface is hard hard surfaces where when the rainfall hits it, instead of permeating down into the soil, it's running off. And what that's doing is it's causing capacity issues for stormwater infrastructure and public safety concerns. In Pennsylvania, we've actually seen a seventy percent increase in high-intensity storms over the last fifteen years. So that's creating a lot more stormwater that needs to be managed in a quicker amount of time. The third challenge that we're seeing is tightening D E P and EPA regulation. So the regulatory requirements are tightening for municipalities. You now need to do more than you've had to do before, just to meet regulatory requirements. And then the fourth challenge to all of that is level funding. So in most municipalities, they're seeing their tax revenue remain stagnant while they're seeing all of these other costs that are increasing. So Ben, if you'll go to the next slide. As part of that, we're seeing more and more municipalities turn to a stormwater fee to meet those challenges of aging infrastructure, managing flooding, dealing with those regulatory requirements. When you implement a stormwater utility and you enact a stormwater fee, that revenue from that fee goes strictly to cover stormwater costs, and then it can also cover related pavement management costs as well. And so legally through that fee, you can fund the aging infrastructure. You can fund flood prevention. You can fund addressing those regulatory requirements. It then allows you to take those stormwater-related costs out of your general fund budget. And you can take those related pavement management costs as well. So you actually put them in a separate stormwater fund budget, and then you have that fee revenue coming to pay for those. So it makes balancing your general fund budget easier, and ideally, you have more money falling to the bottom line than after you take the stormwater cost out of the budget. Go on to the next slide. And while there's a number of different reasons why we're seeing more and more municipalities embrace stormwater utilities, financial reasons tend to be the leading driver. What I just mentioned before is, you know, they provide a dedicated revenue stream for stormwater improvements and pavement management. Again, relying on general tax revenue for a lot of municipalities, it just isn't practical anymore. There simply isn't enough money to cover all of the costs that municipalities are dealing with. And we see that stormwater typically falls to the bottom of your priority list as I know leaders tend to, you know, try to put funds towards more high-profile projects, you know, things that constituents are asking for. You know, maybe that's park improvements, or maybe it's pavement rehabilitation. So stormwater utilities, they overcome that challenge by providing a dedicated revenue source that's not robbed for other municipal needs. Ben, you can click that again. As I alluded to previously, as infrastructure continues to age and the need for capital improvements and revenue requirements increase municipalities' ability to invest in improvements, it just declines over time as again, that revenue remains static. And yet, we see the cost of improvements increase with inflation. We see the needs increase with regulatory requirements. So stormwater fees are going to provide that more steady and predictable strain that's not dependent upon any of the upswings or the downturns of the economy. And then, as I mentioned before, those, the revenue in your tax revenue that's currently going towards stormwater, it can be directed towards police. It can be directed towards fire, roads, other infrastructure. So it's again, it's creating more of that positive cash flow for you. If you could click that again. You're also required to abide by the Local Government Unit Debt Act, and that limits the amount of debt that you as a municipality can occur. What the fee does is it allows you to self-liquidate any future debt then, then you take on relative to stormwater improvements or relative to that related pavement management. So you can take on that debt and it doesn't count towards your borrowing limits because we can self-liquidate it. So what that means is you can borrow funds to do projects. It's going to allow you to realize economies of scale. You can do more for less money without it counting towards your borrowing limit. And then funding agencies, what we're seeing is, before they provide grant funds for stormwater projects, they want to see that you as a community have the ability to effectively maintain that improvement that they're giving you the money to fund in the first place. They don't want to give you the money and then it prematurely fails because you're not able to operate and maintain it effectively. So what we're seeing is communities that are implementing stormwater fees are getting higher consideration for government grants and other subsidized funding. Next slide, please. And then another leading financial reason is that stormwater fees are more equitable than charging through taxes. And that's because stormwater fees, as Ben was alluding to, they more fairly apportion the cost of stormwater based upon how much a property contributes to the system. And that's because storm rates are based upon a property's impervious area, which correlates to the contribution to the problem. So either the quantity of stormwater leaving the property or the quality of stormwater leaving the property, as opposed to the assessed value of a property. So for this reason, stormwater fees are considered to be a lot more flexible and responsive to the true nature of stormwater than a straight property tax would be. Your value of your land isn't necessarily a direct correlation to how much stormwater is going to be leaving your property. So if you were to picture a lot, a large lot that maybe has a large building on it, the size of an acre, right? And if you think of that that building sitting on that lot and how big it would be, and what the value of that building might be. And then picture a similar-sized property that has a one-acre parking lot on it. Both of those properties would contribute the same amount of stormwater. They'd have the same amount of runoff from that impervious area. But the property with the building on it would be paying a lot more for stormwater service if it, when it's right now, how it's funded through taxes. Whereas if you fund it through a fee, then you're basing it again off of the impervious area and how much runoff is coming off. So stormwater fees kind of correct for the imbalance in terms of what property owners pay when stormwater is funded through a tax. Another way which stormwater fees are more equitable than property taxes is that enables you to collect fees from tax-exempt users. Oftentimes, those tax-exempt users are making major contributions of stormwater to the system, but currently, they're not paying for it because they're tax-exempt in nature. So if you think of churches, nonprofit organizations like hospitals, universities, right? They have typically large buildings, large parking lots, so they're generating a lot of stormwater for you to manage, but currently, they're not paying towards those costs of stormwater. So with a stormwater fee, you find that residents and for-profit businesses no longer need to shoulder the cost burden of stormwater alone. So these two reasons, alone, charging based upon impervious area and not assessed property value and charging tax-exempt properties, we find that it results in a significant cost savings to residential users, so the heart of your constituent base. We've implemented stormwater fees benefiting over fifty municipalities in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and we see time and time again that residents typically save fifty to seventy percent when they pay for stormwater through a fee as opposed to paying for it through taxes. So the stormwater fee actually allows your constituents to save money. And then another important aspect of the fee-based structure is that the fees are based upon your actual usage of the stormwater system. So if a property owner wants to make improvements on their property to reduce the amount of stormwater they're discharging, then they can get a credit, and that credit acts to reduce the fee that they're paying. And so it has an added bonus of encouraging good behavior, inspiring property owners throughout the community to make improvements to their property that manage stormwater. What that's going to do is it's going to reduce the cost of the municipality managing stormwater, and then you can give that cost savings back to your property owners through that credit. Next slide, please. And so, you know, what we've seen time and time again in implementing stormwater fees is that it's a game changer for the community. First, it provides that steady stream of revenue, allowing you to take expenditures out of your general fund and have them paid through the stormwater fee. And then you can use those general funds towards other needs in the municipality. Allows you to self-liquidate your associated debt, so you can borrow funds and realize economies of scale and implement more effective projects. You can get better consideration for grant funding from agencies because you have a dedicated revenue stream. And then what I've seen as being the real benefit for communities is the partnerships that it creates. Because again, it incentivizes property owners to get involved with the municipality, to get involved in tree plantings, to make improvements on their property to reduce stormwater. And so again, it's no longer just the municipality and the public works crew, you know, dealing with stormwater, but it becomes part of the community. Next slide, please. And so there's over a hundred communities across the Commonwealth that have decided to move forward in implementing stormwater utilities over the past ten years. H R G has been fortunate to work with over half of those municipalities in setting up their stormwater utility and associated fee. And, you know, now looking back, in some cases, you know, ten years later, it's really exciting to see the benefits that it's brought to those municipalities and their property owners, what they've been able to do with the money, how they've been able to improve the community, and how, again, incentivizing property owners to get involved has really changed the way in which stormwater is managed. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tyler. He's going to explain a little bit more about the cost savings to property owners, especially those residential property owners when we charge through a fee as opposed to a tax.
Hi, everyone. So as Adrian was saying, there is a substantial savings that we see to residential property owners. So I have an example here. This is not this community, but it is an example community that we recently implemented a stormwater utility program for. So you'll see on the left-hand side, that is the share of taxable assessed value. Single-family residential properties make up roughly sixty-four percent, and then all other properties are thirty-six percent. Now, that is excluding tax-exempt properties. From the fee, you'll see that the share of impervious area makes up thirty-eight percent for single-family residential properties. All other properties excluding tax-exempt make up forty-nine percent of that impervious area, and then thirteen percent of the impervious area is tax-exempt properties. So what you'll see here is residential savings for the average residential property owner of roughly sixty-eight percent. So not every community is going to have a number that high, but we do typically see a range from thirty to seventy, seventy-five percent savings for residential property owners. And a lot of it does depend on the makeup of the community, how many properties are tax-exempt, and you know, how much business or commercial properties exist. Next slide. So before we go any farther, if you just want to, I think, click two more times, thank you. Before we go any farther, I do want to just talk about the kind of legal aspect of a stormwater utility. So the Municipal Authorities Act explicitly gives the ability to implement a stormwater utility fee. The authorities may charge reasonable and uniform rates, which may be based in whole or in part on property characteristics. So those property characteristics would be the impervious area that we're talking about. There are some, now again, I'm not a lawyer, nor do I play one on TV, but there are, you know, some cases that lead us to believe, I'm trying to speak in a little bit of consciousness here because I am not a legal advisor, but that lead us to believe that the impervious area is the best way to implement a stormwater utility fee. So that has been tried and has been ruled favorably for. So next slide. We did include here a checklist. Click through that a couple of times for me. So this checklist is not in total what we would recommend, but it is kind of the minimum guidance. Thank you. Yep, that's the last one. So to set a legally defensible stormwater utility fee, the purpose should be regulatory or revenue raising. So my understanding is that you guys are not currently an MS four community. However, there are changes to the MS four program, which is a statewide program regulating stormwater discharge that might impact you in the future. So this can assist in meeting those regulatory requirements. The charge should be voluntary. So in this case, the voluntary nature is by, you know, having impervious area on your property, you're able to control how much impervious area you do or don't have. The charge is in return for a service, so the overall stormwater program, the infrastructure maintenance, you know, flooding mitigation, those types of things. A direct benefit would be conferred. So again, that infrastructure. The charge is part of a comprehensive scheme. So that's our overall program for implementing the stormwater program, O and M, operation and maintenance requirements, things of that nature. The derived funds are stored and used properly, so they should be used solely for stormwater-related projects. As Adrian talked, it can be in part used for pavement as it is associated to the stormwater work. And then the charge is reasonable and uniform. And that is a very important one, that the charge is reasonable and uniform. And that is how we move forward utilizing the impervious area. By utilizing that, it is a reasonable and uniform assessment for property. Next slide. So now I have an implementation milestone here, and I do apologize, I put a lot of actions in. But so this is typically a year-long process. We see communities do it faster, we see them do it slower. But I would say on average, it takes about a year to implement. This timeline is not necessarily accurate to how we would implement, but it is the easiest way to talk through the project. A lot of these do overlap, and as you're doing one, you're kind of working on another. Next slide. The first one that we'll talk about is the impervious area database. So the impervious area database is historically done through flights. Now, we are seeing AI start to be used. You know, it is still early days for AI. It is getting substantially better. But, you know, there is a benefit to potentially doing a flight versus utilizing that AI. AI is historically cheaper. But the goal is to get aerial imagery and then a digitized database of your impervious area. So there is an example here showing buildings, parking lots. Typically, roads are removed for the sake of implementing a fee. But you want to make sure that you're able to say how much impervious area is on a parcel. Next slide. And then the budget development. So the main aspect of developing a stormwater program is determining your level of service. So that is determined by determining what expenses should be covered by the stormwater program, what projects need to be accomplished, what, you know, regulatory goals are program, what projects need to be accomplished, what, you know, regulatory goals are necessary. Typically, we see labor associated with stormwater, so if you have crews going out and doing leaf collection, replacing inlets, replacing stormwater pipes, those types of things can be transitioned to the stormwater program. Any sort of regulatory costs, as I said, any sort of projects, so large-scale projects, small-scale projects, those types of things, and then any sort of engineering aspects associated with those projects could be transferred as well. I would say on average, we see a budget for communities ranging from, you know, $1.5 to $2 million, and it is dependent on the community. We've seen smaller, we've seen larger. But it is, you know, based on the need and then the schedule of implementation. So you can have a substantially higher budget if you want to address all of your problems in a short timeframe. We typically see that that number is way too high for any reasonable municipality to implement. So we start scheduling and planning those projects to make sure they're addressed in a timely fashion. So the next aspect, once you have your budget, is determining your rate structure. And you can click one more time. So there's two options. There's an ERU option, equivalent residential unit, or a tiered approach. So for an equivalent residential unit, that's similar to an EDU and sanitary. So all single-family residential properties would pay the same rate, and then non-single-family residential properties or all other properties would pay a rate based on that multiple of ERU. So if a property has twice as much impervious as their average home, they would pay twice as much. The tiered approach is just that. It's tiered ranges of impervious area, where a property is assessed a tier to a tier based on the amount of impervious on that property. Now, we typically have ranges of, you know, a couple of thousand, thousand to maybe three or four thousand, depending on the community, where if you fall within that range, you're paying this rate. And then if you're above the maximum rate, you would pay a rate based on per thousand square feet of impervious.
Tyler, what are you seeing in terms of, like, typical rates for residential?
Oh, yeah. So typical rates for a residential property, I would say recently, we're seeing anywhere from, you know, $10 to $15 be the average residential rate. Again, each community is different. There are some that have implemented this, you know, many years ago, and as a result have lower rates and have been able to sustain those lower rates. But programs being implemented recently, the highest I've seen is around 20, but most are falling around that 10 to 15 range.
And that's per month?
That's per month, correct. Thank you. So by-
Otherwise, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Being able to directly impact your, how much you're paying, isn't as easy as necessarily turning off your sink, turning off your lights, not flushing your toilet. But there is an approach here, and it's the credit policy. So if you can click one more time. I made this hard for you, and I appreciate you saving-
[laughing]
There we go. All right. So to reduce the stormwater on your property through a stormwater BMP, something like an infiltration pit, or for larger properties, detention basins, if you do that, then you would be provided that credit that Adrian talked to. That would be reducing your impact on the system, and therefore, you're able to get that as a reduction in your rate. If you're improving the quality of stormwater, similar to reducing the rate or volume. And then there's also opportunities to assist via partnerships. So it's kind of open-ended. There's a general framework of what we've seen. We've seen communities implement things such as educational credits or rain barrel rebates, things of that nature. But the main focus for this credit is really the stormwater program and those BMPs associated with it. Next slide. And then public outreach. So public outreach is key to having this program be accepted by the community.
I said public outreach.
That consists of meetings, much like this, newsletters, mailings, having that information available on the website. Really, the goal is to make sure that the community is able to provide as much feedback and guidance as possible while also making sure that they're informed throughout the entire process. And then the last step is to determine if, you know, you're merging this with an existing authority or an existing bill. You know, a lot of communities try and get it onto an existing bill just to keep costs down for billing. Make those credit and appeal adjustments. Because I don't know if I talked about the appeal process, but part of this would be having an appeal process where if a property owner believes that their property is incorrectly assessed, they have the opportunity to say, hey, I think you guys might have got something wrong, and we can make adjustments. And then make, you know, parcel owner updates as properties change. So key takeaways here is, as Adrian was saying, that fee provides general fund relief. Make sure that your stormwater issues are properly funded holistically and strategically. The, you know, also the pavement side of that. The fee equitably spreads those costs to reduce that homeowner burden, and then make sure you're utilizing proper legal mechanisms to have a defensible fee. So that is everything we have for you. Any questions?
Yeah, I have, what township did you work for?
I worked for two. So I worked for Lunnderry Township down below Harrisburg, and then Silver Spring Township.
And then, did you guys do the Ferguson Township study, or was that somebody else?
We did not do Ferguson.
Because I noticed they re-killed theirs.
Yeah.
And why wouldn't they do that after going to all the programs?
That's a great question. I think there might have been some board turnover after the fee was implemented. So I think one board was in office, they implemented the fee, and then I think through the course of elections, I think a lot of those people fell.
So that could be a problem. You could churn over your council, and then they come in and eliminate the stormwater fees.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's possible, that could happen. And as I mentioned before, Tyler and I have had the ability to implement stormwater fees benefiting over 50 municipalities, and we haven't had anything like that happen. What we've seen as a stormwater program really take off, as long as they're planned and implemented correctly. And, you know, Tyler mentioned the public outreach, the public education, you know, that's really critical. We need them to understand the benefit of what they're getting through the fee, and we've found that, you know, once you do that correctly, then you're implementing a program that's stable and is here.
And the state still extends themselves when they have to pay?
Yeah, currently, they do. We are waiting to hear the results of a Supreme Court case that's currently pending, and there are existing authorities that currently charge stormwater fees with state-owned property. They have a plan in place for some additional legal action against the state if the current state, the current case before the Supreme Court is not ruled in favor of the municipality.
And if, let's say I was a homeowner building a new home, there would give me guidelines saying, oh, you might not want to put a big driveway in, maybe put a driveway that's gravel, or does that help you if you do that?
Yeah, I mean, what have you seen in-
So typically, gravel is considered impervious as well, because as it is compacted, it's similar to concrete that, you know, dirt. But there is a framework to, you know, explain how the fee is calculated, how impervious area is calculated, what constitutes impervious area, and also the benefits of the credit policies. You can say, hey, if you implement, you know, this BMP while you're constructing an infiltration pit or something along those lines, which will be substantially less to do at that time, it can reduce your rate.
So you could put a drywall in or something to pump the water in?
Yeah, essentially, it's a stone pit in your backyard that you would ground your downstairs. It's a little bit more complicated than that.
Okay, that's all.
I have a complicated question, which I'll give you just a little bit of background on. You may be familiar with the Treasure Lake community here in Sandy Township, which is a community of a few thousand that's around Treasure Lake. And they are a, they're pretty much self-sustaining, I guess you could say. They maintain their own roads and that sort of thing. And so part of the challenge with figuring out taxes and such here is essentially, what do you do for those people that are paying property tax but are actually not getting as many benefits, I'll say, as some of the other communities? And it strikes me that it's possible that since they're their own Property Owners Association and everything, that they may be in a different category than the rest of the future city, which leads me to the question of if we implemented a stormwater fee, is there essentially a way that we could partition that off since they've maintained, they're maintaining their own system? Maybe they don't have to have the same fee, or at least not the same level of fee, as, say, a community that's in Oklahoma or downtown Dubois. Is that fair?
Yeah, sure. Yep, that's a great question. So Tyler mentioned before that the Municipal Authorities Act requires us to implement fees that are uniform, and that means uniform based upon level of service. So what we do as we're developing the budget and developing the rates, we look at the properties throughout the community, and we say, are any properties receiving less of a benefit from the program than others? And if that is the case, then what we can do is we can develop, like, two-tier rates, where it could be possible that residents of Treasure Lake could pay a lesser rate than other residents, but what we'd have to look at is the cost of the stormwater program, and which costs do benefit those members, and so they should pay a portion of the cost? And then in what ways are there other members that, of the community, that are receiving more benefit than Treasure Lake would receive? So similar to, like, you might have separate rate districts for wastewater, you could have two different rate districts for stormwater.
It's a perfect tie up-
Runs my mind that Treasure Lake has already started a stormwater payment program. For some reason, it's-
Yeah, they might, yeah. Yeah, they may. But certainly, this leads perfectly into my next question, which is essentially, what kinds of things do you normally see these communities use the stormwater fee money for? Things that come to mind for me, for instance, would be proportion of a VAC truck and that kind of thing, which, you know, Treasure Lake handles their own street sweeping and that sort of thing. And so, you know, that could help go towards costs of the future, I'll call it the current city for the most part, because that's the bulk of where I would see most of that going. So what kinds of examples of real things could you see coming off of your property tax and instead sharing the burden to pay for, fill in the blank?
Yeah, sure. So you mentioned, you know, street sweeping, VAC trucks, you know, leaf collection, cleaning up after, you know, storm events, rebuilding catch basins, like stormwater inlets, rebuilding stormwater pipe, maintaining any of the stormwater infrastructure, new capital improvement projects, pavement rehabilitation, so repaving roads, redoing curbing. What else would you say, Tyler? What did I miss?
I think I hit everything. Yeah, I was, you know, general equipment needs, things of that, like labor costs.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Yeah, so typically, what would happen is a city currently doesn't have the express ability under Pennsylvania law to implement a stormwater fee itself. So what we're seeing is most cities and other municipalities, they're using a municipal authority to implement the fee. So what would happen is, and there would be an agreement between the city and the municipal authority for street sweeping and public works labor and all those things to do what they currently do from a day-to-day basis. And then through that agreement, the authority would just reimburse the city for your current cost to maintain stormwater and pavement management. Does that make sense?
Yep. What is the legal cost and/or HRG kind of related costs to set up the municipal authority, do the study, come up with the budget, go through those steps that you outlined?
Yeah, so there's going to be engineering costs associated with implementing the fee. There's going to be legal costs. Typically, municipalities will use a special council, council that do a lot of stormwater fee implementation work. And then there's also costs associated with developing the impervious area estimates for each property. So I would say on average, we're seeing communities probably spend between, say, $150,000 to $200,000 on implementation. It really depends upon how you're going to get the impervious area developed. We're really have seen those costs come down in recent years. As Tyler mentioned, typically, it's you put a plane in the air, aerial photographs, and then you have people actually going and digitizing each property. Now, we're seeing communities start to use AI to get that done, and so with some of the ones that we've done in the last year, we've seen those costs really come down. The accuracy might not be as good. There could be more cost on the backend in terms of appeals, and so that's why we're telling you, like, there's a range. It kind of depends if you want to spend the money upfront, or if you're willing to work with the property owners to make those corrections on the backend in order to save costs in implementation.
Very good.
One other thing I'll note is the implementation cost, communities typically opt for that to be reimbursed. So the program then would pay back, you know, whatever entity is paying for that implementation.
So once the stormwater fee revenue comes in, it would repay the municipality for the costs that they put out upfront.
Good. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So I know we're an hour and 45 minutes in, and that was strategic on our part. We're going last so that, you know, you can ask all the hard questions of those guys, and-
They're too tired to ask questions.
Yeah, they're too tired to ask questions, and we'll get through our presentation really easily. But hey, I did really want to elevate the conversation from kind of the stuff that we've been voting on and talking about lately in terms of specific line items, and really think big picture about, in this case, probably 2027, as kind of the backdrop for, we've had some really hard conversations recently about the budget and how kind of there's this impending storm, things like the deferred capital is actually now coming to bite you. You've kicked the can kind of too far down the road, and it's time to deal with it. There's the added costs of lumping Sandy Township Fire Department in with the city fire. There's all the huge debt service that the community's having to pay. There's general lost revenue over previous years of not keeping up with inflation. There's the rent replacement from the water and sewer funds, and so all of this is kind of compounding into this really challenging narrative of, hey, guys, you kind of have to raise your taxes in order to pay for all of this stuff. And although we don't have the solution for you in 2026, what we are trying to do is give you some hope that 2027 and beyond, it might be a little bit more equitable. And we may be proposing tax increases today for 2026, but I want to give you some hope that if you implement things like these programs that we've talked about tonight, you might actually be able to see a decrease again in 2027 and beyond if we do some of that planning and implementation in 2026. And so with all of that, you know, that great hour and a half conversation about stormwater and what you do with your housing, and hopefully in a near-future meeting, I'll talk about the Emergency Services Authority concept as well, with all of that as a backdrop. The last thing on the agenda tonight is your homework, which was what capital items do you want to pay for in 2026? We have millions of dollars of needs in coming years. I think we basically said it would be about $1.2 million needed every year over the course of the next decade in order to do the projects that we've identified in the Capital Improvement Plan for the next 10 years. And right now, the way the budget is, the way we left it last week, essentially, we came to a conclusion about what was going to happen for operating, and there's no conclusion as to what was going to happen for capital. And so your homework as a joint board was come back to us with the list of things that you do in fact want to pay for in 2026, understanding that that's pretty much going to have to be solely paid for by general fund tax mileage, because we can't be applying for grants and such now in order to pay for things next year. And many of the things that need to be replaced imminently, you probably wouldn't be able to get grants for anyway. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board. We've sent you, after the last meeting, a list of all the capital requests, and so I guess, would we start with Jen? Does that sound fair?
Sure. Sure. Honestly, Ben, I'm going to not say much about it. I've said my piece with where I think we need to be. There's a new board that's going to be in place, and I see some other people are here that are on, going to be on the board. I think I've done my share the past two years to get us where we're at, and I'll leave it to the rest of them to decide where they'd like to spend their dollars or make cuts, because I've gotten thrown to the wolves. So if you want to cut the fire department, the police, or whatever, or not, it's up to them. Take it away, Mark. Take it away, Mark.
Okay, I've not heard anybody tell me that we want to cut services. The 26 general fund budget comes out, or excuse me, capital budget, 1.427 million, which I think equates to like 4.5 mils. You cannot kick the can any further as Ben's analogy. We haven't raised taxes for 15 years.
A lot of mills.
Equipment is failing.
A lot of mills.
We've got a lot of people giving inputs to the capital budget that need these programs or need to have this equipment replaced. So somewhere we got to come up with a. I guess we need to agree between 4.5 mils or start cutting services.
I thought you just said there was no talk of cutting services.
I have yet to hear anybody tell me that they want to cut police, fire, public works.
I didn't say that I wanted to, but I mean, I just, now we've been getting hammered for wanting to raise a few mils and now you're talking, how many? Four or not?
4.5 to come close to generating the 26 capital budget of 1.427.
And there's no talk of cutting anything on that list.
So if we need to cut 10%, then I say you go department by department until you come up with that millage number that you can live with. I think, Sam, I'm going to, did we, or maybe it was Ben that started a model for what those rates would cost the average homeowner or? Do you have it by board member?
I do, yeah.
But what do you want to model?
I think the the city resident does not have a millage increase as the operating budget stands now.
Very, very minimal.
Yeah, like less than a quarter of a mil. Township residents, just to come up to where the city is, what? Two and a quarter, 2.5? Okay, so Sandy Township residents, just to pay the operating budget, we're already looking at two and a quarter mils. You throw capital in there, we need another four and a quarter, four and a half on top of that. So if you've done some modeling.
Yeah, sure. What I've got here. Right-size that. So what we can do here is I'll answer your question and I'll try to make it brief. And if you want more of an explanation, maybe we can set up a meeting. Essentially, property tax is done this way. You have a property value in the computer-aided management system at the county. And then there's this thing called predetermined ratio. And P D R takes that and divides it by some percentage. In this case, I believe it's half to get you to what's called the assessed value. So that's the assessed value of any property. And the total assessed value of a community is, of course, every single parcel, both land and properties that are added together. Now, there's two sides of that. There's the assessed value that's taxable and the assessed value that's not taxable. And so in these models, the only thing that I bothered taking into account was the total taxable assessed values. So that's non-tax exempt properties. And as we talked about before, Dubois City currently has about 20% of all of its properties are nonprofit owned that are not paying tax. Sandy Township is 10%. In the new city, it'll be about 14%. So in this model, all I care about is the total assessed taxable values. I'm adding those two together from current Sandy, current Dubois, and coming up with a combined value of approximately $360 million. Again, that's all those taxable parcels added together. I see some sleepy eyes. Mil is, you divide that by 1,000. That's one mil. And then you take that and you multiply that value by whatever your millage rate is. And so in the current city, that's 10 general mils. That's 1.7 for library and recreation. They're unfortunately combined. In Sandy Township, it's because townships actually have more taxing authority, weirdly. But the trade-off is that the the cap for a city is 30, cap for the township is less. So in Sandy Township, you have 6.5 for general millage, a quarter for library, nothing for recreation, nothing for bond. Fire is one and a half. And then you have these couple of oddball things, highway equipment and building improvement. So that ends up being a total of 9.12 mils total for the township. Blending those is a mathematical feat. So because it was relatively easy compared to other communities though because the total assessed value in the township is almost exactly two times what it is in the city. But nevertheless, it was kind of complicated to get to this. If you blend the two communities, you're at essentially 7.6 for the general mils, 0.4 for the library, 0.335 for recreation, so on and so forth. And so we took those and created this model whereby we, first of all, took that money that normally would be transferred on an annual basis from Water and Sewer Fund to cover general fund operations. That equates to approximately 3.5 mils. We figured out that to cover the fire department, it's basically two mils. And then the general government actually is a decrease to 4.25. The big question, the delta, the last time we also talked about library, we talked about recreation, and we talked about the bond debt that you're currently forced to pay. And then the big question here, the the color in red, the big question is, what do you actually want to put towards capital? So currently in the model that we presented earlier, it was only half a mil. But that's not actually enough to cover things. And so your question tonight is, what would it do to my taxes if this was, let's say, one mil? And in order to make it real, what I did was I took some some random people, for instance, Bob, who lives at Treasure Lake, who actually, I think, told me it was okay to to show his. So this is Barry's property, right? Everyone else is.
Hi, Bob.
Yeah. All right, so here's how it goes. I already described how you get a mil. Then the school district currently taxes by the assessed value by 47, almost 48 mils. The county is at 13 and a half. The township is currently at 7.375. And then there's the fire tax and library tax for a grand total of 19.13 local and 70.3 grand total. The vast lion's share, of course, like in every community, is the school district. In the new model, we've got, again, I just kept Dubois areas, the the school stagnant. I assumed that the county would stay stagnant. And we just threw in this 10.8783, which is that really like minor increase over the the current 11 and a quarter. If you add all those together, you get 12 and a point five or 15, right? For a grand total of 73 mils. That is an increase for Barry. I'll just go ahead and change it back. Barry would see a tax increase of $157. That's an overall increase of 4.3%. Meanwhile, though, Sharon, who lives on Brady Street, would actually only see an increase of $17 on her property that is valued at an assessed value of $40,000. And so on and so forth. So with this model, all you need to tell me is, I want to see what it takes to get to, what was your question? You want to see what it would take to get how many mils to cover the current bond? You want 4.5. So I'm going to insert 4.5 here. So now Barry's property tax increased almost 10% overall to increase $365. Meanwhile, Sharon increased $180.
Sharon, you should be telling.
I have a question. Now, this is just on the general. What would be the increase add in the sewer?
In the sewer fees?
Yes. What's the increase for next year on top of what they're going to be paying as this fee?
I don't have a model in here of of it. I mean, you would be able to easily calculate your own by taking the base fees that was proposed and increasing it. We could model that if you like.
I want to see that because that's that's playing a crucial part here, too. You've got $300 here. If your sewer is going to be $200, that's $500 a year.
Right. And unfortunately, again, those are, we're kind of stuck on those because, you know, you have this new plant, for instance, that is forcing you to increase things dramatically. You know, we don't really have an option on the water and the sewer rates. Your only question is, how do you want to distribute it?
There's not much.
Whereas this, you have complete control, right? I mean, you could tell us, we are definitely not increasing property taxes at all. In fact, we're going down 10%. And how we're going to do that is by cutting fire, cutting police, whatever you want.
Can't cut the debt at the sewer plant.
There's nothing you can do at the sewer and the water plant at this point. Like, I mean, the experts are here. They're, you're kind of stuck with it. You bought a Cadillac that you can't sell.
We need to maintain.
Right.
You just got to get out them to get more houses going.
It's it's now Karen.
What's $145 a year for customers using 500 damage?
So again, to bring it back to kind of the question of the day, there's 1.4 in capital that you need, right?
1.4 covers the list which you provided us last month.
Right. Which equates to 4.5 million. And so the question will be, do you actually want to raise property taxes enough to cover those? Or are there some of those that you think you will have to defer out further?
Or get grants.
Or cut completely. You're not going to get hardly anything covered in 2026 by grants because.
Too late, too late.
Yeah.
Would you repeat that? Just repeat that one more time. We're not going to get covered.
Well, you're not going to be able to apply for grants in the last 30-some days of of 2025 and actually receive the revenue in 2026 for the major capital items. I mean, might you get an L S A or something, which is? We've got a bunch of grant applications and resolutions that will be on the next agenda next week. And so maybe there's something that comes from that, right? You might get a couple of L S As that maybe equate to 100 or 200,000 dollars or something like that, but it's not going to save your bacon.
Save your bacon.
That's an official political science term.
No matter what number we we kick around tonight, we can, if we agree to a millage rate, the new council will always have the opportunity come January to adjust that.
That is the case. You, the new board will be able to open reopen the budget for a couple of weeks in January, re-advertise it and revote on it in by Valentine's Day. So is there anything on that capital list that we emailed out that you want to defer? Or would you like?
I have a question about the, and maybe you can help me with that. Is the water rescue expense in in the capital budget, there's a million dollar something?
$100 for the water rescue?
That's when it's cleaned out to 230, 2032.
Yeah, I think that's a few years out.
I'm still looking at it. It's still on the capital list.
Oh.
Yeah, I I get it. On the capital list, we got.
It goes out many years.
This dates. And what I did is looked at the expense coming in 2026.
Right.
I didn't take anything out to 27 to 37. I didn't take that out.
I did.
That number is 1.4 million, give or take a dollars.
Ben, so.
I went I went out the whole, the whole list.
So answering your question, that's to replace Engine 71 Rescue 38 and make it combined. It's taken two pieces of apparatus combined into one to be an engine rescue. And the cost of the the equipment, that fire truck itself, is probably around $1,000.
I'm looking at this this wet rescue. Is that what you're talking about?
Hold on, he's getting up here.
It's a.
The wet rescue in 2032 will replace an Engine 71 and Rescue 38. So those two pieces of fire apparatus will combine to one brand new piece that is an engine rescue.
I guess, why do you call it a wet rescue and just not a rescue?
Because it'll have it'll have a tank and a pump on it, so it'll carry water.
That's why it's wet. It's not for wa, it's not for water rescue. That's what I, yeah, I was looking for some kind of million-dollar boat. What the heck, what the heck you buying a boat for?
It's not a new fishing boat.
Okay. Well, in the past, we've bought other stuff, similar.
Ben, can you just put up for 2026? I think everybody's getting in the weeds here, 2032 to 2030.
Yeah, here we go. Actually, I'll just.
You get confused.
I'll just hide a couple of these to make it easier to see. Okay, 27 is 3.1 million.
Yeah, I mean, you have to consider that.
The next two years. The main bulk of that is a tanker and an engine replacement.
Right.
And next year, the main cost really is a tanker.
I mean, what's the sense of considering capital improvements if you're going out just one year? That's that's a budgetary expense, not a capital improvement. If it's just, if you're just doing a year. If you went out 10 years, added it up and divided it out. I think if you went out 10 years, I think it's two and a half mils, 2.7 mils.
I think it's 1.0, oh, mils, sorry, yes.
Yes. Instead of four, you might have to put some stuff off, but now you can get everything you need with a two-mil increase instead of a four-and-a-half-mil increase and just need to budget better.
Okay, so Model A was 4.5, Model B is two.
Two.
All right, so two.
And over 10 years, you can get the same stuff. Because you have some years that there's nothing in there, very little in there. Otherwise, you're going to have to do this whole thing over again next year. Do you want to do that? And then you'd have to raise another two or three mils in 27 to cover the budgeted items in 27. Why not just say, here's what we have in 10 years, just that's when we could buy it?
If it is, it's going to change.
Absolutely.
We've got so much stuff that's not cleared yet. These these contracts and everything, there's not clear. The fire department's not clear. We were talking going five into one. You're going to see savings. We're trying to put the cart before the horse here. Let's just get a budget. This is why I've been harping on this budget since February of this year. So we've had this, and now we're getting out of crunch time and everybody's in a hurry to get this taken care of. And it's. to get this taken care of, and it's ridiculous. The thing is, is we need to keep it simple for our people going into twenty-six. There's a lot of stuff that's still in this budget that can be cut down, I feel, is bloated. And we're going past this, we're just trying to just rush and pay for everything. That's bull. It's just like the two fire stations being built. We don't know where money came from for that yet. And we shouldn't even be looking at that yet, and that's why I asked to sit down. We've got a ladder truck we've got to replace, we've got other trucks to replace. We need to get down and sit down and figure out what we are going to need for this new community. We're just putting stuff on the board here and, like Mark, four and a half mills. Where's these people going to come up with six hundred dollars more a year to survive just to pay their taxes and sewage and water? They can't go back to their employer and say, hey, I want a raise. I want a thousand dollar raise next year because I got to pay my taxes. We can't do that to our people. This gentleman even told you, we've got an aging community. That's limited budget. We need to look at doing a basic, looking at this stormwater next year, looking, you know, with this gentleman, and looking to see what we can do to move forward. We're just trying to, everything was screwed up, and you know that, Pat. You come into a screwed up thing. Why should we try to pay for it in twenty twenty-six? We can't. And Mark, getting back to you, I heard in the polls, people want, they don't want to be paying astronomical tax bills. They can't survive.
I think it came to a dollar a day for a treasure-like residence.
A dollar a day, yeah. How about your elderly people that only have social security, like twenty-two hundred dollars a month for two people and try to survive, pay their everything?
Phil, this isn't a last minute thing. I've been working with the budget for over six months that we've been hashing this stuff out. It's not a last minute thing. It needs to be done.
Okay, yeah.
And you have to consider capital expenses. Where do they come, where do they come from? You need to budget for them. They haven't budgeted, it hasn't been budgeted for for twenty years, it's been done incorrectly. Their money's been borrowed. It's time we quit borrowing and we start saving.
You should have thought that two years ago when you got on board.
Uh huh, we did.
But you still took for your water and sewer for your pension. You should have done it then. Shame on you.
We got rid of jobs.
I stand at two percent for capital. Barry, you're up.
Is there any money in any loan funds, RAC grants that's still sitting out there that are unknown before we get into any of that? I mean, I'm sure that you guys have turned almost every stone.
And dug under the stone.
So what we did prepare for this was a graphic that shows you not only the color, so all the colored accounts are the new city accounts. All the white ones are diagramming what money is going into what account. So by way of example, you've got the city liquid fuels money. At the end of the year, we anticipate there being three hundred and forty thousand, township one hundred and one thousand, right? CDBG, twenty-five dollars, nineteen thousand dollars, so on and so forth. So these, these are restricted, they're not going to be helpful to you. When it comes over to the stuff that's going to go into the general fund, Sandy Township will probably be able to start the New Year's general fund with about three hundred thousand and the city about a hundred and ten thousand. Meanwhile, well, yeah, but remember, that still has to get you through to tax, till taxes come in, in the spring.
That might be tough.
Yeah. Yes, it will be. And so, looking over here, this is the messiest part. This is where you've got...
It's not a lot of savings.
This is where you've got all the current savings that you have going towards the capital fund. So what you do have is there's a, you know, an account in the city that has about three hundred thousand for fields. There's two accounts that have seventy-five, seventy-eight thousand dollars from, yeah, from the roof and street sweeper funds. Lord Abbott is probably one of the biggest. It's at two hundred and thirty after, yeah, I already subtracted the big payments that are coming out of that. And then there's a capital improvement fund at this township that has eight hundred and seventy-two. So in essence of unrestricted, unplanned stuff, there's maybe eight hundred and seventy-two thousand coming from the township and two hundred and thirty coming from the city. So you've got about a million bucks. That's about it.
But that's to pay the, how many months' bills?
Well, that's for the capital improvement stuff.
That would offset, that would offset...
If you were going...
Four hundred thousand if you want to do that.
If you wanted to run yourself dry, yes.
You want to run the well dry though, that's the key, because we have grants coming down the road and they're matching grants. If we don't have money in the fund, then we are S.O.L.
Or you're going to borrow it.
You know, we, we have to borrow. So the key is, do you pay now or do you pay later? Do you borrow or do we raise our taxes? I allow my tax rate to be show. I'm not a happy camper. But it is what it is. There's no getting around it. How high do we want to go? That seems to be the issue we have to talk about. You know, I talked to the fire chiefs, you know, a couple of things we kicked around, they said, hey, you know, maybe we can take four hundred thousand out of our capital, you know, and it'd kick it back in. But at least they're sending us information. I didn't talk to any of the police or I didn't talk to anybody, I just happened to talk to those guys, you know. I thought it was a heck of a suggestion. You know, now we're back to a million. So now that's what?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, yeah.
Yeah, two and a quarter.
So, you know, that's my input for tonight, is if we do that, you know, we leave the operations alone, let me get to my notes here, yeah, leave the everyday activities alone because the fire companies still have to operate, still have to put fuel in your trucks, and still have to maintain your houses. But if they give us four hundred thousand, I think that's a start in the right direction.
Which fund is, which fund is that?
So we asked for a capital fund that we've never had, neither department has ever had capital funds. So, you know, off of what we scoured out over the course of, what was it, forty years, whatever it is?
Yeah.
With the replacement of the apparatus and so on, it's right around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year in capital that we're asking for. So, you know, we're talking with Barry, we've never had anything. So, you know, sure, if they're going to give us four, we're not going to balk at it. I wouldn't think he balked at it. So, you know, four hundred starts us in the right direction. I mean, you see, we have some apparatus that, you know, needs replaced. I mean, it's coming due, unfortunately.
And you can apply for grants prior to that?
We will try, yes.
Yeah, yes, it is, and you get what you get.
It's hard to get an apparatus grant, it really is.
And the key that we talked about is...
The last truck I had one.
Not to put HRG on the spot, but...
Well, the thing is, you know, I appreciate both chiefs sitting down and it was very open, it was very frank conversation, and I appreciated it. So that's what I'm bringing to the table. I'm bringing four hundred thousand.
Okay, so about a mill.
Good job, Bob.
It's like an auction house.
Hey, what'd you do?
I want to cut ten percent.
Okay, where?
Across the board.
Every department decrease ten percent.
Ten percent.
So the challenge of that, you know, and we work with a lot of communities that say that until rubber meets the road, and it's just not, like, you can't take the HR department, that's basically one staff person, and cut that person a tenth of their legs off, right? So what does that literally mean?
You can't cut hospitalization ten percent unless you cut staff ten percent.
Right, whereas it's far...
There's avenues in each department, you could cut ten percent.
I don't think that that's accurate. You could maybe cut, maybe if you look at Public Works, Police, and Administration, you could look at cutting ten percent overall, but...
The gas bills are going to be the same, the electric bills are going to be the same, you can't cut those.
Those are going up.
Yeah, those are going up, right.
Yeah, there are a lot of things that you cannot cut.
So you'd have to cut things like fifteen percent that you can cut to come up with a ten percent.
Correct. And again, then you're cutting services. Like you're saying, I'm taking three police officers off the street. What will that do to the crime rate and that kind of thing?
Well, like their overtime budget for the proposables, a hundred and ten thousand, and they've only used fifty-three thousand? I mean, that could cut down, you could save fifty, sixty thousand right there.
They used to, they used to use more than their overtime budget, and we talked to them, cut it down.
Now you're going with two. They run twelve-hour shifts. That's why the township went to the twelve-hour shift.
That's why Dubois went, that's why Dubois went to the shift.
You still have to add in all the trains, community days, that's about twelve thousand in overtime alone.
Core dates.
You're going to have...
That's what you had this year too, Sean, that's what I had in there. Well, you already used already this year, between both. That's what, yeah, yeah. Yes, it is. Yeah, it's both your budgets.
I think something else was taken out of the wrong line item for overtime for the township.
Yeah, fifty-three for both, both, that'd be...
We're fifty-three buyers.
That would be unbelievable.
That much.
And fifty-three is good, because it used to be a hundred and ten.
Our budget's a hundred and ten.
Well, I'm sorry, no, yours was fifty-two, four fifty, and the township was twelve, one sixty-one.
Yeah, that number might be, but we're trying to...
Well, that's scary.
Most of them. There may have been a minor error.
Most of our...
Okay.
But not on our end.
Most of our overtime isn't covered in shifts. Most of our overtime is periods for four, or community days, or when the Charlie Kirk Vigil, stuff like that comes up, that's, that's ten, twelve thousand dollars. You get, you get a major incident, we're out there. That stuff adds up. If you want to have a big celebration for a birthday, July fourth.
Twenty twenty-six American.
Right, that's more money than...
If you'll be on duty three days, straight.
We went back the last five years to review this overtime coverage of departments. We went back and looked at the port time, we went back and obviously looked at the general overtime coverage. The new staffing structure has been eliminating most of overtime coverage shifts, but you're still going to have a certain amount of overtime for mandated training, plus we're trying to, like, improve our, in certain areas. We don't want it to be the mandatory minimum, we want it better. So we worked that all into that one ten number. That one ten number, believe it or not, that's a pretty tight one. I mean, we're comfortable with that, but it's still a really tight one.
Yeah, we used to have that just for, just for Dubois.
He knows what I do, Josh, we've talked about this before in the township, try to keep it minimal. But I know there's training, but you don't want career officers doing career training either, they need to be on the streets also.
Correct.
So I guess, you know, we're kind of down in one specific department and one specific line item, you know, that at best could maybe get you forty grand and possibly more headaches. But rather than argue with that, generally what I'm saying is there, the line items, there's not going to be enough little changes that you can make in order to not do a tax increase. If you're directing us to cut staff and you want to say, cut ten percent of all staff across the board, that is something that we could make workable. Is that the direction of the board?
I don't want to see that.
I don't want to see that.
So I have one yes and one, two, three, four, five nos of those here?
I wasn't paying attention.
Or yeah? Okay, one, two, three, four, and then to two, maybe?
Maybe.
I'm not for a major ten percent cut across the board.
Okay, and Elliot's a no. So we want to level fund the current staffing.
I would like, I want to ask a question on the capital stuff, when you're...
I'm sorry, Elliot, we can't really hear you.
I hear what he said.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
If you speak really loud.
Can you hear me?
Faintly.
All right, hold on.
It's, I don't think it's your fault, I think that the volume to the whole system has turned down.
Yeah, it's just not very... All right, go ahead, look at me.
Okay, so again, Lisa is looking for direction on what do you want to do? Are we raising taxes? Are we not doing any capital? Or are we cutting operations? And I think the majority is saying we're not cutting operations.
It's my vote.
And we're only...
I would not agree to cut operations.
Okay.
I would not agree to cut operations.
Same here.
So we have a majority on that. Capital, it sounds like there's, if I can speak for the kind of average, it sounds like we're saying maybe go for half of what was proposed. So a couple, like two mil, is that a compromise?
I think so. I think that's a good number.
Can you hear me better now?
Some items will need to be pushed off a year or so, but that's a good number. Let's build up, build up some cash.
You two guys live with that? You two departments?
Yep, I mean, that, help us, help us here, I mean, that's...
They don't have a choice.
Yeah, you don't. Yeah, because, I don't want to go without police services. I don't want to go without fire services.
Well, you're not, you can't.
They're a necessity of life. And God forbid it, we have something major happen and the phones are going to be off the hook, hey, where's all our police? Hey, why is, why the fire truck, you know, we're, I don't want that. I don't want that for our new city. I don't want us to be put behind the eight ball. And I might be all wet, that's okay, you speak up. But I, I just don't want that. And, and who's going to work, who's going to collect our taxes? And who's going to be our administrative staff? You know, we, we still have to have workers, you know? Who's going to sweep our streets and who's going to plow our snow? Who? When Scott wants to call somebody out at midnight because we have a sewer break in front of your house, oh, there's nobody there. I don't have any overtime left. You know, what do you do? This is what we're facing. So...
We're talking, we're talking about capital.
Capital.
Not capital, we only decide...
They still need your foot, and they still need people to work, and...
But they're still going to get it.
What's your number? What's your number? Four or two?
Four or two?
Yeah. Two or four mills for capital?
On top of...
Just for capital.
For capital?
Yeah, just for capital. Taxes are taxes, they're done.
Four or two?
What's wrong with in-between threes?
I'll go with four.
How about two point eight?
Two point eight, there you go. How about three?
Tom, it's your number, not mine.
Three's still, you should be three, Ben.
Sure.
Please?
I'm going to go with my tax.
Just under three hundred increase.
That's your four mills, Barry.
That's, no, that's three.
That's three.
And what does two?
Andy on Hand Street?
Andy's the city, right?
One, uh...
Andy lives in the city.
No, it would have...
Two allows, it's ten years to capital foot, two will cover that for ten years.
Andy?
Yeah, Andy on Hand Street.
I want you to say who it is, Ben. It's me.
I guess.
I don't like knowledge. Just put Bill Beers down. God, guys play these charades.
Where do you get the county to reassess your house?
There's Jack. Maybe he owes Bonrosa.
I knew Jack was...
The original one you put up was four mills where Barry went up to...
Let's use, let's use Bob.
Sixty-five.
Oh.
It's nine...
Very...
You don't need...
It's nine.
You don't need to do every rear.
Ponrosa. What a fictitious name.
I want to, while you're looking at that for a second, I just want to pipe in and talk about cash for just a quick minute. So as we've been looking at the cash going into the new city, I want to remind you all that you have paid cash for a building. I know that some of it came from bond funding, but the rest of it came from your reserve funds that you have had sitting in these bank accounts. And so when we start talking about operational costs and tight budgets and capital improvements, we spent $2 million or are spending $2 million in cash on a pay-as-you-go project that most people would use debt service for. And so therefore, we have depleted a lot of reserve funds on these building projects. And so I just want to remind you that these discussions aren't necessarily about anybody doing anything wrong or, we, we need, we need all these things to happen eventually. I'm not saying they're all in 2026, but I want to remind you where you have come from because it's admirable to do that, to spend your cash and not take on additional debt. But you also paid cash and didn't take on additional debt and therefore depleted some of this money that would have been nice going into the new city and then, you know, not having to debate, to debate. Because I think Bill's making a solid point that we have to go through a year, I've talked to you guys about this before, and seeing where you land on things because so many things are new. And so I do want to caution you about spending everything that you have. I, I just want you to be really careful of that because if one thing breaks, I do feel like these budget numbers we have given you are so tight that it scares me that if something happens, I don't know how we'll pay for it.
Right.
And so I want to be really clear about that. Thank you.
So we need a cushion, is what you're saying.
You don't have it.
And we don't have it.
You do not, you.
We don't have a cushion. Back to my point. Scott Farrell. We, we have emergency water break.
We're just talking capital now.
I know that, but, but we still need money. We've got to have money. Two and a half.
Three.
I'd say three.
I'll go with three.
The contingency is with the fire department, the $400,000.
Why aren't we picking on the fire department?
They offered.
Who's picking?
Listen, if we need.
Barry's the one.
You're used to no help. You're used to no help, aren't you?
I'm used to no help.
For funding capital.
I mean, for the capital project.
Mark, and I know what you're saying, we're not picking on it.
I should say, picking on it, if we want to reduce capital by 25%, why aren't we taking 25 across the board instead of taking 100% from the fire department?
We're not.
Fire department's the only person we're talking about cutting.
No, we're not saying we're cutting. He just said. Well, but he said they didn't have any capital. The city gave them, well, the city didn't give them, but let's just say there was a million dollars almost turned over to, you know, or is back into the.
That's the city fire department's capital.
Okay, so that's, I'm saying that we can use part of that towards their projects.
Absolutely. That's what it's there for.
Yes.
You could use the whole mill. You could use, is it a million two now, Bill? Or Bill? Ben? You've got different names for everybody now.
I think no one's picking on them, but it's.
I should say, picking was a bad choice.
I mean, Barry's the one that brought it up.
Picking on them, they have.
400,000, we stay at three mils.
I think they have a million two in it.
The water and sewer is what it is. And we hold tight on what the spending is next year. You really don't have an issue with the, the funding here. Like we've, I've known this for two years, three years now. So here we are.
Three mils.
Okay, three, three, I got a text from Elliot, three, three.
Geez. 400,000. We talked to him, it's three. Carry it over.
Right, so we're going to, we're going to revisit this again down the road.
Many times, many times.
I mean, to Bill's point, what you made at the last, two meetings ago, I don't think you were at the last meeting.
No, I had to work because I'm going to have to pay my taxes.
Right? So, you know, the replacements.
We'll have a spark next week.
Replacements that we have as far as our apparatus goes, we did that with a, with a 3% increase, which is very low when it comes to fire apparatus. Fire apparatus is so darn expensive right now and it's never going to change. It's not going to get any lower, it's just going to keep growing, it's such a necessity. So no matter what, you can either kick the can, you can answer the question now or kick the can down the road. You know, we're looking at replacing several pieces of apparatus that are coming due. Now, the fire department, we're working on consolidating and getting rid of some apparatus. We do, we know that we have too much. Right now, you know, we're looking at probably eight pieces of apparatus that's going to go out of service and go off for sale. Hopefully, we can come to agreement on that. And that will reduce our fleet, as it stands now, probably by 35 to 40%, okay? The thing about, you're talking millions of dollars when it comes time to replace specialized, custom-made pieces of apparatus, engines, trucks, tankers, rescuers. Those things, that cost is there. There, there's no getting around that. So by reducing our fleet and reducing some of the engines that we have that are just what I call manpower caller, so they come to the scene with members, membership, and they just sit there and do nothing. So it's a million-dollar piece of apparatus.
Doing nothing?
Nothing. So the idea is to reduce that and replace that with pickup trucks, maybe brush trucks along the way. That will help with us and our cost over the course of the next 40 years. It doesn't change the fact that we have several tankers that we have to have that are pushing 25 to 30 years old. We'd have to get those replaced and those are going to be million-dollar pieces of apparatus that have to be replaced. Now, the number we've got there was 800,000, that's on the low and that's a very low end. And the apparatus that we're selling isn't going to return very much investment. You know, I showed Barry the other day, a similar tanker to what Oklahoma has sitting at their station right now, a 2,000 freight liner, 3,000 gallons, selling right now at Rendy Mountain for $16,000. 16 grand is what we probably, most likely will get for it. Bill has a similar tanker that's going to need due. He's not going to get very much back, the same boat, and that needs replaced. We're talking back-to-back years and then North Point Stankers as well, it's an O4. So you have a 2,000, 2,001, 2,004. Those things have to come due and get replaced. It is what it is.
What about the, the state fire study that said smaller tankers?
Yeah, they're saying the 2,000 gallon tankers, I mean.
You're defeating your purpose.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, if you, but if you go up to Treasure Lake, you, you might need something smaller to get around the turns.
You need more water because they burn quicker. There's more BTUs in these houses than you ever seen.
More water on homes is better when you get into the fire areas.
Everything's petroleum-based.
Okay.
Furniture is.
If I could.
400?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like where we're at is we go back and build them, build the model based on three for capital and leave everything else the same. We will have that prepared by next Wednesday so that you can approve the advertisement of that. There could be little tweaks there and there if you find a line item or something that's overstated, understated, it could be slightly tweaked. It will then need to be released on the 26th and be out for public inspection. Then you can vote on it at the December meeting. Budget goes into effect. New board could open it if, if they want, but that's the timeline we're dealing with here. Is that clear? Okay.
So you're going to start advertising the day before Thanksgiving?
To be, to be clear, it's open then for 20-plus days.
30 days, right?
Uh, 20. Is the legal minimum. Sorry. I think we've got, Lisa, anything else? On, on budget, anything else? Okay, there's just one item on the city agenda, there's nothing for township.
Clear directions ahead.
Yeah, it's, it's clear as I guess we'll get out of a committee.
New business for the city, the neighborhood fund donation. With the SNAP program being cut by the federal government, I think they just reinstated half of it. There's going to be a lot of children and, and young families going hungry. My suggestion is we take, the neighborhood fund has $6,700 and my suggestion is we take 3,000 donated to the Salvation Army and 3,000 to the Dubois area food pantry to help feed those families in need. So if somebody agrees with me, make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Elliot? You're the other majority for the city. Yeah, he's on. Uh-oh. There's your sign the meeting went too long.
I'm here.
Okay. Was that a second?
Do you need a second or a yes vote?
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. This is just city.
Just city, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Two's enough. Aye, there you go. Thank you. Our families will appreciate that. In closing, public comment, Melissa Keen, sorry you had to wait so long. You still awake?
One last question. I just want to give a quick congratulations to all the new council members. Also, Pat, thank you very much. That's actually the neighborly fund, that's what we kind of were talking about and I had said.
It's, it's up to.
Right, and the family had said that, so that actually goes directly to it, so I appreciate that. I think that was wonderful idea. The other thing is, it's completely, I didn't know Joel was going to mention you, Scott, so we're not picking on you at all.
It's okay. It's why I'm here.
He's tough.
No, we just, you probably already made a decision about renaming Fuller Avenue. I just wanted to make a comment about that because I live on Home Camp Road, but Home Camp Road has also been named Water Treatment Plant Road to, yeah, to your discussion of maybe changing the name of Fuller Avenue so it is identifiable. So I.
I don't know of the water plant road being changed names at all.
Well, that, yeah, that's just, it came back to the census because if you go to the White Pages, it actually does say Water Treatment Plant Road, Water Treatment Road on my address, even though my normal address is, so it's caused a little bit of a conflict.
Didn't know that, it shouldn't be.
So, I mean, yes.
Treatment Plant Road's actually the sewage plant entrance right now.
Water Treatment Road, the thing is, it's been beneficial to us because people have said, oh, this is.
Township to change that.
You know, this is water treatment, no, we don't, that's not us.
As township supervisors change that.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, so anyway, anyway, but that was brought up, but this is going to come back to, since I live on Home Camp, we do get those of four or three, I think that went back to the census, it's not been the census. We actually, if there wasn't a name, we're supposed to put a name in. So it's been a little bit of confusion. I just recommend just keeping it Fuller Avenue because in a roundabout way, four, four, yeah.
Nah.
That's all that's.
I wanted to, I wanted to keep, be Home Camp Road too. Go ahead.
I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday is the toy for Tosh Drive and Food Pantry Drive at every fire department within the city. So all nine companies will have somebody in-house welcoming. Please stop by there, drop off some food pantry items, drop off the toy, we really appreciate it. Thank you. From 11 until 2.
This Saturday?
This Saturday.
This Saturday? Okay, cool. All right, thanks. We're at board member comments.
No, I'm good.
Who was that next door, Tom?
I'm sorry, I didn't see the second check mark.
I want to talk a little bit about what you guys are just talking about, throwing out these mills. You're talking five-mill increase for Sandy. And I think it's about 50% from what they're paying now. So you got a 50% increase. You threw out more on the capital. What's happening with the 300,000 now that Sandy has in surplus with the budget? That's 300,000 right there. I have brought up a two-tiered system and fees for the pools and whatever other fees that we have out there. Start looking at that. I hear that the pool system in Dubois allows people from other communities to come and utilize them. Hey, that's great, but charge them a little, charge them more. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, the residents of Treasure Lake is going to pay five mils more for nothing more that we're going to get there. And then we talk about the timber. I know where a lot of the folks are at. You want to keep your water bills down. My electric goes up, it seems like every month, my water goes up every month, everything's going up. Why don't you take that, at least for this year, and shove that into capital and look at maybe using that funding for capital? There can be other things. I heard you talking about having to park some rec person. Can we afford right now to start hiring people? And then there was something in the person to do some urban development or some other types of stuff. There's a lot of money being thrown around. I think there's places to cut. Bill, I support you in what you're trying to do, but a five-mill, 50% increase for Sandy. And again, where's the 300,000 going? Is that factored into the budget for next year? You still have that surplus, right? It was 600, I don't know where the other 300.
Should have been at the end of the year.
And I know, Jason, you said that the apparatus isn't worth very much. And I'm not picking on you guys, I'm very supportive of you, but can't we factor in some of those capital costs, what we might get for that? Maybe it's nothing, maybe it's just a few dollars. So, I mean, you gave up 400,000 and stuff.
I don't think you can count on him selling a piece of apparatus just because you don't even know if it's going to sell. So you can't really account for that being the line item that doesn't, a budget's money coming in when you don't even know if it's going to sell and what it's going to sell for.
So that's kind of gravy if you do sell. So the eight apparatus that over the next year, I assume over the next year you're going to sell.
Right, so the average age of the apparatus that we're going to be doing, all the eighties, which is 30 years old, is not going to return any, I assume. It's unfortunate, but that's.
Yeah, okay. I thought you'd get more for it. So anyways, Bill, I'm going to ask you, you seem to be the only one out there. Five knows is ridiculous.
I don't want it either, Dick.
And.
You'll see my vote here soon.
Yeah, well, try and convince them and I'm going to ask all those that want the election to overturn this. I, I think it's crazy. You can cut your capital, you don't have to do everything in the first year. Thank you.
Mark, public comment? Board member comment?
No, I'm good.
Bill?
I'll hold mine till next week, Ben. Stay tuned.
No, I just want to thank everyone for going through that long meeting that was long, but it was informative and I appreciate everyone's comments about what we should do and what we're doing in the way we're supposed to do it and we'll see everyone in the next week.
Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. Barry? More to say?
Yes, I would like to comment on the housing study by Adam Hartman. I think for the new council coming in, he hit three very important segments. Strengthen the property, management, cut the forgesments, addressing the blight, revitalization Strengthening property, management, cut reinforcements, addressing the blight, revitalization of the neighborhood, which we have through our downtown group that we're working very hard on that, and modernization of our parking. I think that's a great start for the new city, it pulls us in the right direction in my opinion. And I hope to use that as a model as we move forward into January.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
And I have nothing, but I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right.